Good. Good morning, good afternoon. It is Tuesday, June 13th, and I will now call this work session to order. I'm going to start by reading our "Who Are We?" statement. "We are the Polk County Leadership Governance Team. If we were to pick one phrase to define us, it would be 'student-centered', because when we come together to work, we lean on our diverse backgrounds and experiences to ensure that our decisions are focused on providing a high-quality education for all students. The four most important things to our governance team are operating with integrity, respecting our students, staff, families, and each other; establishing a culture where our stakeholders feel valued, supported, and have opportunities for personal and professional growth; and supporting an approach of continuous improvement to ensure student outcomes. Collectively, we need to work on behalf of the children we serve and find avenues of agreement so that we can govern the district in an effective manner. There is no acceptable alternative. We will always collaborate in a respectful manner in order to enhance opportunities for each student and staff member. We will not disparage others. Our children will thrive because we will remain committed to supporting the whole child. We hope to engage and empower our students and stakeholders to create a community of lifelong learners." And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Hyde.
Ms. Ma'am, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the community and staff. At this time, we'll begin with the first item on the superintendent's report, which is an item related to a naming request for Lena Vista Elementary School. Regional Assistant Superintendent Beth Nave is not present today, so I'll cover this item for her. This is not before the Board for a vote tonight, it will come back in July. However, everything has been submitted, including the SAC meeting minutes where they made the recommendation. There are multiple letters here nominating Coach for this recognition of this facility, and so at this time, I'd like to present to the Board that we will be bringing back to you for a vote at the July meeting, a request for Lena Vista Elementary School. Staff and community members are recommending the long-lasting legacy of Coach James Murphy to be commemorated by naming the Physical Education Pavilion in his honor. Coach Murphy has dedicated over thirty-five years, excuse me, twenty-five, thirty-five years of his career to Lena Vista, having first joined Polk County Public Schools in 1988. Any questions before we move on? Once again, all items required have been submitted for approval. This item will come back before you in July. Next item before us, we'll bring Ms. Candy Amato, Senior Director, Office of Charter Schools, to the podium, is in relation to E. Shadai Community Academy. L. Shadai, excuse me, I need my glasses.
And so we have received a new charter application from L. Shadai, and they are here to present on their application.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. All right. My name is Geddy Saint Germain, and just going to give just a brief of our vision, you know, for L. Shadai. First, I want to say that I'm a graduate of Polk County, 1990, Aberndell Senior High School, and it's through those times at Polk County that I began, you know, studying French, you know, as a, with, you know, my two years in eleventh, eleventh and twelfth grade. Then I went on to college and, you know, I fell in love with the language and started to become a teacher, a French teacher, and which is where I started my career. I first went to France, you know, where I had opportunity to teach over there. Yep. So it's through all my experiences with education as a teacher, and later on became an administrator. But I came up with, we came up with our thoughts, you know, and different views of, you know, how we can assist, you know, in this, in Polk County, you know, with this vision that I'm going to present here. So I think we scroll this way, right? All right. So L. Shadai Community Academy. Well, I'm just going to answer some of the questions that were up here. A brief introduction to the number and the community that are targeted, a population. And we will aim to not discriminate and aim to gear towards providing education for everyone, you know, towards in the county, who will, I guess, aim to want to participate in a program as what we want to offer. And ESC is, again, we aimed for it to be to a charter school, you know, and with the hope of, you know, getting, you know, our students won't have to pay any tuition. I mean, as, you know, that's what you guys, that's what, you know, the Polk County School, you know, you know, make available. So overview of academic design, okay? So our mission is to make available to our community a modern academic program to train students of grade K-12 and give them the necessary skills to compete in the community and globally. Again, our approach will highlight and intercontinental element in subject areas. Our aim is to engrain with an all-grade level the classical education and also blended learning, you know, approach, you know, to our learning. Also, I mean additionally, if you, we're further on the bottom here, we are preparing, we aim to prepare global citizens where language, other language other than English will be unavailable, you know, for students. We have immersion in couple of languages, French and Spanish, in some subject areas. Again, these are areas where I'm strict, I have strength because of my ground, again, from teaching, you know, in immersion programs, you know, throughout, whether it's, I studied in France, and I went to Canada, then worked in China with different international schools. Okay, make this, hold on. Okay, it's not, all right. All right, am I, all right, let's see. Okay, yes, got it. All right. Why is there a need for this type of school? All right, L. Shadai will provide an education that is unique to the Polk County at this time. Our entire program will be based on, again, global competencies, world languages, and culture which will be needed in the 20th, 21st century. And again, with the ability to, for languages opens many doors for me, you know, and also people that were among me, among my colleagues, and where, or those were open, you know, with the state, you know, working, you know, whether it's interpretation, interpretation, where they're working, you know, for the consulates, you know, doors are open, you know, for not only work but also connection with, you know, globally. So, and I, I'm so grateful that now I started, you know, early in high school, you know, learning languages, and emphasis on immersion, you know, and I'm so grateful for Mrs. Myers, who in Aberndell Senior High School, who pushed, who pushed me to study French and fall in love with the language. And L. Shadai Community intend to, on providing students the opportunity to relate with, again, different languages. Our approach is to provide the student the opportunity to connect with other students abroad and with a relationship that we have developed, you know, with what we call exchange programs and different things like that, that will enable students, you know, to develop, you know, their immersion abilities. Okay. Our overview of the academic design, again, we aim, our aim is to use the program from Hillsdale College, which provide a curriculum which is classical, but which can be connected in a sense where we can, we can break into our, into the midst of that deliver, the curriculum, our vision. And so, I'm not good with this presentation here, I mean, this is not, maybe I'll keep my hand behind me, so no one touching, that's great. Yeah, all right. So, okay, let me go back here. Okay, why is there a need? Again, as I've stated, I don't see anything as such, you know, in the community. And also, I mean, we have, we are such a blend, you know, in the community, you know, where, you know, we are Anglo's, we are Hispanic, we are French, we are Creole. And I know there are, there's a great, you know, need for this kind of program, because I hear people talk of that. I hear people that wants to keep, you know, within their culture, a language, but they are, these opportunities are not open, you know, because school, you know, students spend more time at school or at home, where, in other words, if we are, if they were able to have that opportunity, you know, it will, it will be an opportunity for them to keep, you know, not only, you know, family languages, but also, you know, expand, you know, their own personal, you know, you know, horizons, you know, for different other cultures. And what's the benefit of that? Well, connection, you know, again, global connections work, enhance your ability, you know, at work and different things like that, working for companies that are international and things like that. So explain why the charter model is the appropriate. Again, I was, I am at first to say that I fall in love with the charter school, because I work for a charter school. I like the fact that you, as a charter program, you can design the program, you know, for, you know, the, I mean, for your vision, you know, and, and one specific thing is classical education, you know, as I fall in love again with the classical approach, because I do see the outcome of that, I mean, the strength of it. And additionally, L. Shadai intends to be a college prep program. That's our aim, you know, for our students, you know, we're going to, we aim to provide them, you know, the base, not only in language but also in all subject areas, you know, to enhance them, I mean, to bring them to a level where they will not have, they will be ready for college. And we intend on using appropriate resources that ensure that the development of each student and in all areas. And we keep, we'll aim to keep track of our, and detail track on our students, especially in the area of reading and the area of development, you know, and the specific language that they will aim to, to, to adapt, you know, within their time with us. Okay, so, all right. So explain why the charter school model is an appropriate vehicle to address this need. Okay, our vision is to create, again, a K-12 that delivers an exceptional educational program and prepare students to understand issues of the world, appreciate the culture and cultural diversities, respect the perspective of others, and have the ability to communicate effectively. We will aim for our students to be evaluated, to evaluate life experiences and make decisions that will make differences in their home, in their community at large. And our approach at L. Shadai Community is to nurture the individual, and our aim is to successfully provide each student guidance and feedback on reaching their future. Now, our program will see the need of adding students in discovering their strengths and weaknesses. We aim to use approaches that would provide students opportunities of solving problems locally, domestically, and internationally. And L. Shadai Community Academy will use the Hillsdale, again, classical curriculum and will model after high, after north, north, name of the school, north, I'm sorry, I can't remember, but it's a, it's a school in South Florida, Chunoff, that's the name of the, Chunoff has a model that we, also we want to connect with. I have some colleagues that work, you know, for Chunoff, and their approach, you know, has been so vital, you know, in terms of how they reach, you know, the South Miami, you know, community. And we will use, again, the STEAM approach to our, develop to our delivery. And additionally, looping, which would be one of our approach to how we present, we keep students, you know, with teachers so that we can see, you know, the model of, I mean, I mean, we see the students, you know, in other words, keeping them in a longer, you know, term of, with one teacher, you know, to make sure that the teacher, you know, kept a track, you know, within these years that they are with them, you know, of them growing in their, in those specific subject of looping. And the demographic, again, we are aiming to talk, to assist or to, to present, to provide education to all level, to all members of Polk County, and based on the population. We have a majority, sixty-four percent of whites and twenty percent Latinos, we have ten percent black, and that's, there are some that are from the Caribbean and others that are from here, and also other races, you know, there is eleven percent. So our aim is to target whoever that comes to our, to our door, and again, we will aim to target a specific program, I mean, that will enhance each individual, because we will monitor them, you know, regularly so that we can assist them into their growth. All right, and yes, ESCA will work in compliance with the school district and will always maintain a collaborative relationship with the school district. And the school will engage in annual compliance reviews, either independently or collaboration with the specialists assigned to work with, you know, the school. Our, I mean, other measures to assess the quality of the program will include feedback from students, parents, and staff on the school climate survey and result from the survey of parents or guardians of students. And L. Shadai Academy has entered into a collaboration with leaders in the community, and it is through this relationship that we will connect with families and also may secure a building to start the school. And we were approached by this organization, I mean, they are a church organization, they have the building, and they, and we dialogue with them, and they, there was a great need, you know, for that, for our type of school within that area where, where this church is located, and they have a facility that can accommodate, you know, classrooms and different, different aspect of a school function. Okay? And L. Shadai Community, oh, okay, my time is up, okay, I'll stop talking, but in brief, that's what we aim, our aim is to provide a program that is a bit different but efficient, and, and we just would like for your making this available, you know, to the students in our community, yeah.
Hi, thank you for being here today. I just have a couple of questions. I appreciate that you are looking at the community, the French Creole community, because there are less supports for those students in general across the district, the community-based supports especially, and I think what a great language study is French is, to have that available to them. I just have a couple of questions. The college you refer to and the name of, that you're proposing for your charter school is very faith-based. Would it be, which is fine, but charter still has, you know, charter still has the mandates of state standards and different curriculum. Private schools have so much more leeway with the vouchers that have just been, you know, released, and pretty much every family can have a voucher. Was there a reason you went charter instead of a private? I just think, I'm just asking for the faith-based component, because that would be allowed, I mean, you could do that as well with the vouchers that you, that you may be limited in a public charter school.
Because, I mean, we have had, you know, collaborators who already have started, you know, charter school, and we like, we kind of appreciate what they already have started, and, which is, I mean, which is where we have most of our, you know, vision, more our zeal, you know, to, to see the same thing that's happening, you know, in the area, happening here, you know, using that model, yeah.
So it'll be a similar model to what they already have?
Yes, yeah, right, yes.
Okay. Will they be a parent company of it? Will they have interest financially in it?
No, no interest financially, just, just collaborators, I mean, that are doing the same type of work here.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Dr. Allen?
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Yeah, I was going to, again, say thank you for being here and, you know, sharing your vision at this point. Obviously, you know, there'll be a very rigorous process that you'll work through from here. And, you know, in general, I think it's pretty interesting that Florida is now recognizing the Classical Learning Test as an optional graduation test requirement and also coincides with our Bright Futures. So, you know, this, this is actually the very first charter from a classical lens, so it's intriguing. So, again, I just appreciate that you're here, and obviously, you know, there's a lot of steps to go from here, and, but I did have one question, looking at your materials. In the new presentation, you used the term blended learning, which wasn't in that initial presentation, so I'm curious, your definition of blended learning?
Blended learning is workstation, you know, where you will have, you know, students, you know, diversify, you know, they're learning on the day, on the delivery of that, of that time, where, I mean, where some will be, you know, projecting, you know, with a presentation, some will be doing some hands-on, you know, presentation. So we'll have different station within the classroom, and that way, teachers can, you know, accommodate to students, you know, specific needs, yeah.
Got you, got you, okay. I think the way I was interpreting it was more of a virtual delivery mode, in a sense, and not like butts-in-the-seat type of delivery. So, yeah, I appreciate you clarifying on that.
Okay.
But, yeah, again, thanks for being here. That's all I have, Superintendent.
There are no further questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is, agenda item is the Charter Review Team's recommendation to Superintendent on Navigator High School of Leadership High School. Ms. Amato?
Good afternoon again. So I'm going to turn it over to somebody who is no stranger to Polk County schools. She's actually worked with us for the past ten years on doing our charter reviews, so we greatly appreciate her expertise and the knowledge that she brings to the table. She also provides that third-party viewpoint to ensure that nothing is skewed, and she does have extensive experience. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Vicky Mace.
I'm not used to your new platform, so my notes and the notebook is not going to work. So let's just work something else. So let's just work something else. Thank you, Dr. Hyde and fellow board.
Not yet.
Oh, don't thank me yet?
Almost.
Almost. Oh, okay. Wish, okay, out in the universe.
We'll be back in the summer.
Okay, I apologize for that. Superintendent Hyde and, and board members, thank you for allowing me to work with your board, as well as the fabulous folks in Candy's office. It's been a pleasure to work with the Charter Application Review Team for the last ten years. I've actually been doing charter evaluations since two thousand and two, started in Bavaria County, similar position as Ms. Amato. So been working on these for a long time, so it's a pleasure to be able to share my expertise with you today. So see, I knew this was going to be a problem because I'm going to hit everything. As Ms. Amato said earlier, now charter schools can give the district at any time their application, so that's why I'm before you today. Used to be in the past that we had specific time frames, but we're no longer working that way. The Charter Review Team is a great team. It's filled with district staff that work very hard, very diligent, also very diligent to the mission of their organization. And so for them to take the time out of their busy schedules to help us with the Charter Review Team is commendable. Community members, three community members, we have a charter school representative, legal counsel, always enjoy working with Mr. Bridges, we go back probably about twenty years together. Charter Schools Department, always, I can email, text anytime and I get a very quick response. And then I'm the external evaluator. And I try to remind the board and for new board members, I think it's good that you bring in an external evaluator because I look at the merit of the application. I simply take that application and I go question by question, and I'm able to look at it through a different lens. I don't know the politics, I don't know the history. And so I think that basing it on the merit of the application is helpful in this process. It's an extensive process. Each team, each team member reviews the application, and then we have two meetings. At that meeting, we discuss the strengths, the weaknesses, and we do spend time on the strengths. I do want to emphasize that because what I probably bring to you the most are the concerns. Also, we have group discussions, lots of group discussions. The members get to advocate to approve a charter recommendation before we take that final tally, and then they vote anonymously or don't vote, but they recommend anonymously whether to approve or deny their charter recommendation. There are lots of Florida statutes that guide us through this process. I have them there for your reference, but we don't have the time to go through them, but those are statutes that guide us. We just can't make decisions, we have to look at these statutes. And I try to just remind the board and the audience that it's easy to get excited about innovative projects. In this case, it would be a seamless K-12 education, which would be fabulous on the same campus. It's, it's easy to get excited about all those things, but we have to remember the balance and look at those statutory requirements when we're making a recommendation. There's also a capacity interview process. You learn a lot at the capacity interview. It's an opportunity to ask questions that are not clear, and sometimes it creates more questions. And I think we'll talk about that today. There were some more questions that were established at that meeting that we are trying to still resolve. So detailed process, we look at the merit of the charter application, we look at the capacity interview, what we learned there, we look at the applicant's capacity to govern, and we also do a lot of due diligence. That's my favorite part, is digging in and finding a lot of information. I try to provide you links so that you can go right to those links and see that information because you need to have the most information, the most facts to make an informed decision. So this year, we've got Navigator Academy of Leadership High School. It's going to be a nine-through, twelfth-grade school. It proposes to open July twenty twenty-four. It's located on the vacant land of the campus of the current Navigator K-8 school, so we, they would be at the same campus. In previous years, just some history for those that are new to the board, Navigator High School did apply in twenty twenty-one. They were denied at that time. They did submit another charter application in twenty twenty-two, but withdrew it before we went through the application process, and now we have the application before us for twenty twenty-three. They're, they're projecting six hundred and fifty students. The last application they submitted was eight hundred and seventy-five students, but this time they lowered their student population. There are a lot of strengths about this, and I don't want to sell those strengths short. There are a lot of strengths about this application. I think there is, what I'm understanding from the Charter Review Team, there is a need for a, a high school in that area, Point Sienna as well, so that definitely is a strength. They're replicating a model that you're familiar with because they're doing the same type of educational model, and so you've seen K-8 educational model in the works. It's a seamless transition from your middle school to your high school. I know that's enticing for parents, they like that, the familiarity with the same campus, that would be a very strong selling point for the school. They have the smart curriculum, they have their NASA partnership, and they did have evidence that the community wants this. Lots of parent support, if you'll see that in the application, as well as a letter from the city manager of Davenport. But there are some concerns that we need to just bring to your attention today. Some of the concerns can be dealt with contractually. If you go to a charter appeal, they will say, go back, figure it out contractually. And there are a lot of things that can be. There are some concerns in the curriculum with not having the most updated, what do you call, the, the best standards when they did their curriculum scope and sequence, there were not, there were some things that were, could be improved, but those are the things that can be worked out. So what I'm going to share with you today are some things that takes perhaps a little bit more of our attention, just so that you understand. So I do want to tell you that the members of the Charter Review Team had nothing but kind words to say about the existing K-8, that they're very collaborative, very transparent. But there have been some concerns with the ESE staffing those students, so that we feel that, or the team of the school district felt that they were serving them effectively. I think that you'll find those similar concerns with this high school application. And one of the things the applicant states is that teaching staff will begin with one certified ESE teacher that can act as both the specialist to maintain the ESE program paperwork and provide direct services. Since the first year, we will have a smaller enrollment, this EE teacher will also oversee the gifted EP students. Contrary to that statement, if you look at the staffing plan, they're only staffing a point five ESE teacher. They're projecting twelve percent ESE students, which is approximately thirty students the first year, and so that's probably a pretty good load for a half of a unit. They are going to be sharing that teacher with the current K-8 school. The other thing too, we're looking at their contracted services. The K-8 school has speech and language currently, but when you look at the budget, there's only budgeted in line item sixty-one thirty for nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is where the applicant told us during the interview that that would also be for a half of a nursing physician, speech services, and a mental health counselor. So there's some questions whether or not that's budgeted appropriately as well. Similar concerns, reservations regarding the staffing for the ESOL students, to serve them effectively. The K-8 school, just, I, I learned during this process, they have added paraprofessionals to make the staffing more appropriate at the school. However, they're also only staffing a point five ESL unit, so they're going to share that unit, again, twelve percent, about thirty kids are going to share that unit with the K-8 school. Ms. Amato asked, well, will that impact the K-8 school if you take a half a unit? Their plan is to hire another unit at the K-8 school and let the current ESOL teacher serve both schools because they're familiar with the students. Oh, I'm not, I'm tapping, that's not working. Governance, governance, this was brought out by one of the board members at the presentation. They have currently three members, they've had the same language since their K-8 application in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't, I don't even know if I got all the dates right, I apologize. But all of their former applications have the same language, that they are going to have five, maybe seven, but they have not added those, and that, that language remains the same. They did say at the interview that they are going to be vetting some perhaps potential board members at their summer workshop. So that'll be something that the district will need to monitor. Transportation services, I just need to be honest with you, you can't deny a charter school because they're not going to provide transportation. That was decided in a court case about two thousand and fifteen. However, it does still remain a concern, will that be a barrier? They haven't had transportation in the past because they said they haven't been able to find providers in that area. Ms. Amato did ask, did they, did they try to find a provider prior to submitting the high school application, and they said no. And so concerned that it still may be a barrier, so Ms. Amato asked, well, how do the parents know whether or not there's not going to be any transportation? They said that it's at the bold lettering at the top of their registration paperwork. I've submitted that as part of the application, that is not the case. They also said that it is apparent on the school's website. I searched the website quite extensively, I couldn't find it, so if it is on the website, it would be difficult for parents to find. So transportation, not required, but they don't have any revenue, they don't have any expenses. Do have a concern whether or not you have some ESE students that might be eligible for transportation. They said that would be a case-by-case basis, but again, there's no expenses, no revenue, so that would impact the budget. Food service, food service, they claim that it is a, is a break-even enterprise. The first year for the school and the second year, it was not a break-even enterprise, however, the two thousand twenty-two financial audit does show that it was a break-even enterprise. They did have to do some transfer, some funds to help it out from the special revenue to the general fund. It might be that the high school will have an easier time because they can come under the umbrella of the National School Lunch Program, but it might be something to monitor as well because it could negatively impact the, the budget. Supplement and planning, that's another thing that doesn't even get scored in the application, but I think it's pretty relevant to a high school. They do say that they are going to offer Florida High School Association sports. When asked which sports, they said soccer, basketball, and perhaps baseball. What I think that needs to be mentioned here is that they're only going to have one JV coach for all five years, and they're not going to have a varsity coach until year three. This is significantly less than what they allocated in their last application. So that would be pretty difficult, especially as Ms. Amato reminded them with Title IX, with Equity, to have one JV coach, and to be able to offer at least girls and boys' sports might be difficult. So another area that would perhaps impact the budget that needs to be discussed today. The management company, there's, there's just some language in the application that makes it interesting as to whether or not there's going to be a good relationship between the management company, or perhaps they're having the right amount of power and authority. And one of the things on page seventy-one, the applicant shares, the faculty and staff of NAL zero zero three, which is the high school, will report directly to the principal, who shall report to the governing board and the ESP. Generally, the principal reports to the governing board. In this case, it's not even a principal, it's going to be a director of schools, a half of a unit, but they didn't change the, the information in the application. And also, on the same page, they state, the ESP will make all school-based decisions establishing and implementing procedures for the day-to-day operations. Again, that would be something generally that your administrative staff would be doing, where your board makes the policy, but you depending on your administrators to implement the policy. Staffing, staffing, as I mentioned, with the ESE and the ELL students, also, they're, they're going to have ten teacher units. They are both core and electives. Last time, they had twelve, so I'm not sure about the reduction. There's also no funding or expenses for substitutes. They will be sharing some services, and these services that they're going to share are ELL, ESOL facilities, which is their landscaping, cleaning, their director, their co-principal, there will be no teachers shared, is what they explained to us. There's some positions that we were not able to find in the budget, which were maintenance, zero-point-five curriculum specialist, and zero-point-five IT specialist. So there are some staffing concerns that might impact the budget as well. Funding the facility, throughout the application, the applicant discusses a lease, and, and there's a couple pages on the facility, and every reference is that they're going to have a lease. But as you look through the document, there's kind of some conflicting information regarding what that lease is going to cost. And so the, the review team was unable to distinguish what would the actual cost of the lease be. There's another thing that I'm going to try to take you back with some history now, and I know I'm doing this very quickly and I apologize, but the application does include a letter, and that letter was dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And basically, what that letter tells us is that the current K-8 school closed on some tax-exempt bonding, which provided the school money so that they could purchase their facility, so they now own the facility. Well, that, in that same letter, it also says that those bonds would be eligible for twelve million five hundred thousand dollars for the expansion for the high school, and that was back in twenty twenty-one. Well, this application was submitted in twenty twenty-four, and so there's no mention to help the Charter Review Team or the district understand what they were going to do. Even in their board meeting minutes, they state on September fourteen, twenty-one, that they closed this bond deal, and that as soon as this charter application for the high school is approved, they would move forward on the construction. And it would be beneficial if they had explained some of that in this application, but instead, they reference having lease payments, and as you can see, provide conflicting information regarding the lease payments. And so some of the history, we're going to talk a little bit more about what happened at the, the interview, where some other information was brought to our attention, but I do think that there was an opportunity to help the district and the Charter Review Team understand what was transpiring as far as them obtaining their facility. Budget, budget is always where we probably spend most of our attention. I also like to thank JD, that's, that is the piece that where most charter schools in their infancy don't do very well. If they're going to have problems, it will be with their budgeting. And so we spend a lot of time on their budget. Just to let you know that the last budget that they provided us was a lot more detailed. There were only really three areas of concern. One was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan, how it was guaranteed because it was someone from campus that was going to guarantee the loan. Also, they didn't use the correct startup balance, they didn't transfer it over from the startup balance to the, to real budget, they didn't transfer that correctly, so that created a deficit right off the bat. And the third thing is they didn't transfer money correctly from their revenue, their revenue estimate worksheet that they work on, that didn't get transferred over to the budget, so that impacted it negatively. This budget has different concerns, and so I'll try to share those with you today. This budget contains the CSP grant, and the CSP grant is a competitive grant. Normally, applicants do not put unguaranteed budgets as part of their revenue because chances are that it would be good, they might get it, the K-8 school got it, but if they don't get it, then they're already going to be in some trouble because of the amount of money that they project. So the applicant told us at the interview that they wouldn't have to use those funds, they were going to use something called development fees in its place, and we're going to talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. The other thing that they did is that they use capital outlay funding. The school is not eligible for capital outlay funding, and in the application evaluation, I provided information so that you can see they're not eligible, and that the K-8 school did not receive capital outlay until year three. At the charter capacity interview, the applicant did admit that the school would not be eligible, so it budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first two years. Again, that's not guaranteed income. The revenue also includes some other unguaranteed revenue, the budget, I mean. There was seventy-five thousand for pre-planning and two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the first year of operation. In the last budget they presented, that was In the last budget they presented, that was under gifts. This time, it's under project advances for development. It includes $60,000 for the first year and $100,000 for years two through five, for something they're calling other local miscellaneous services. Basically, what they explained to us, that these were fundraisers, and they told us about the K-8 school earning $20,000. They did say they could get some more revenue if they did get a grant for their after-school tutoring program. It includes $37,500 for technology fee. What that basically was, was they were charging $150 for every student for their one-on-one device. And so at the interview, they decided that that would be voluntary, and so that the children would not have to pay that. So again, here's $37,000, that is not guaranteed revenue. Expenses, it includes expenses for food. I used to laugh, as a principal, I got a raise when I went to the district because I didn't have to buy donuts and breakfast anymore. You don't get to buy food. And they included that in their budget. They probably don't accurately reflect food services as we're talking about, supplemental program. The facilities, we don't quite know. We have some better understanding now, perhaps, what their costs might be with the facility and their staffing. Those continue to be expenses. So this is the part that I need to, and I don't know how I'm doing on time. Am I okay? How bad? Okay, I'll go real fast, sorry. I'm five minutes over, I think. Basically, let me just do this real quickly. What we learned at the capacity interview is that what was discovered, we believe, and it was after the fact that the evaluation included the capital outlay and the CSP grant. At that time, what happened basically is that the applicant went to try to find a different way to try to help with that problem. And so what they're suggesting now is that they're not going to have to pay their debt service for the first two years, and that it would be postponed to year three. We have some letters, and again, if you read the dialogue in the evaluation, you will see in the dialogue that this was pretty much after the fact, okay? After the budget has been presented, and after it was discovered that these two items were included as revenue. So basically, they said, we're going to get, this is a new development, and that we're going to get you a letter. And so that letter, we were meeting, and we hoped to have the letter before our charter review team group met, but we didn't receive it in time. Once the letter was brought to the district, that letter does not have any guarantee that the debt service is going to be delayed two years, and so the district just moved on. If that had been something presented, and Ms. Amato gave that opportunity to correct, to remedy the situation, we would probably have met again and had taken a different route. The other thing that I just quickly want to show you is that, the other thing they keep on telling us is that project development fees are going to be like the cure-all for everything. Anything that they don't have the money for, they're going to use project development fees, and we really do not have a good understanding of where that money's coming from, who is supplying that, and how that will work. So the budget, right off the front, you can see that when they include the capital outlay and they include the CSP grant, they have a healthy budget. They present you a healthy budget. But if you look right off the bat, you take out the capital outlay, they're already in a deficit fund balance the first year. Because they were not able to provide any evidence, we went through the whole exercise, and that's what I'm giving you today. We went through the whole exercises. Okay, what if they did get to delay their debt service? What would that look like? It would look great until they didn't get the CSP grant, but right now, they were not able to provide us with that evidence, and so we have to go with the budget presented, which will be an insolvent budget because of, right off the bat, the capital outlay fees. So there are other things that we talked about, and so the charter review team recommendation, based on the facts at the time, because we had no letter, the letter didn't prove to be significant, but at the time, based on the facts, the charter review team recommended to deny the charter application, two to approve, eight to deny. Okay, questions? I apologize for going so fast. Lot of material to cover.
Ms. Miller.
That was a lot of material. And I appreciate your voice in this and all of the applications that you review, or the team reviews, because it's very helpful.
Thank you.
You know, I appreciate that you gave the qualities of the school upfront, because I know a lot of people would like to see that school grow. There's several concerns mainly with that budget. I'm concerned for the students who may be receiving support services in the lower school, who will not be able to continue them because it's not budgeted. So when we go back, my question is, that's a lot to do contingent on contract negotiations. Can, I don't know, Candy may be able to talk about that process. Can there be an agreement before this is approved, or, you know, before the vote to approval, of how these many budget concerns will be resolved?
Budget is one of those sticky subjects, because there was a lot of decisions that have to be made, based on staffing and personnel, transportation, if that's going to be a concern, serving the ESC students, serving the ELL students, those all require big dollars. So without having the capital outlay, when we remove that from the budget, budget is very difficult to pinpoint, because it's all about money at the end of the day.
Don't they have, this isn't, they have other schools, so this budgeting process shouldn't be...
So they operate their K-8 here in Polk County, and they also have a K-8 in Hillsborough County.
Okay, so this isn't a brand-new charter, they understand the budgeting issues. Did you share with them that charter students are welcome to sports in their zone schools, so they may be able to use the money they were allocating to sports? I'd rather see ELL services or ESC services provided than pushing money to just a JV sports program.
I don't remember offhand, but there was not a significant amount of money attributed to the sports program. The stipend, it was minimal, just a stipend, and they were picking sports that did not require football, where it requires an extensive amount of money to be spent on uniforms and safety equipment. They already are going to be building a gym, and a softball, baseball-type field is their goal, so they were picking sports that they could already accommodate.
Have they given you a written response to this lengthy report?
Yes, they have. I have shared it with Mr. Hyde, I'll be more than happy to share it with the rest of you.
Please, thank you.
Dr. Allen.
Great, thanks Superintendent Hyde. I was just going to commend Candy. Amato, Ms. Amato, thank you for the transcripts. I mean, as we're working through this, we don't have a glimpse into what's happening behind the curtain, so I think the transcript really helps us through that interview process. And I had a couple questions, and I was curious, we had 10 votes, I believe, from the charter review team, is that correct?
Yes.
How many total members do we have on that team?
I think that there's been as many as 17, but that last meeting took place right there at the end of the school year, and I think there were other commitments, and so we had 10 for the vote that day.
Okay, so 17 total is on the charter review team?
I have to give you an exact count on that, but we do have representatives from each of the curriculum, sometimes curriculum, not to pick on the curriculum department, but sometimes they divide and conquer, and so one representative, although there's three curriculum components, one will represent all three of them. If they have other duties, they divide and conquer.
Okay, so it's not a fixed person in that role as a voting member, it's just...
Not always. The departments, if they send a delegate, they are encouraged to have open communication and conversation with, if they're sending a delegate in their place, so that everyone is very well informed. All participants get access to the electronic version of the application, so whether they are participating in the meeting or reading it on their own, they do have access to all of the information.
Okay, thanks for that.
And they do provide comments, if they cannot attend, they do provide their own comments.
All right, good. New information for me, thank you. In regards to, how many ESC students do they currently serve in the K-8? Do you know?
That's something we can get. I just know what they're projecting, they're projecting 12%, so I don't know what their current K-8.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And then how many students are currently enrolled in their K-8?
Their goal is 1,000, and I know they were close to 900 at one time, I think. Again, that's information that we can get to you, but I know their goal is 1,000.
Yep, I'm just thinking about the amount of students that are rolling out of that K-8 into our schools as well, just thinking about capacity was really at the heart of that question in particular. Is their K-8 budget, is it solvent? Do you know what the fund balance is currently on their K-8 framework?
I do. Their K-8 budget is solvent. They have an unrestricted fund balance. Currently, they have an unrestricted fund balance of $1,598,569. And the reason that I believe that they have that balance is that when they got their bond, the proceeds from the bond, they were able to purchase the building for, the bond proceeds were over $15 million, the purchase of the building was over $14,000, that gave them a little over $1 million, combined with the about $900,000 2021 fund balance, which gave them a very healthy fund balance.
And so, say, within the last five years, I mean, what would their fund balance look like within the last five years?
Their fund balance...
Percentage-wise would be helpful.
I don't have the percentage, but I can tell you that in their first year of operation, I have their unrestricted fund balance, this is from their financial audits, $347,289 their first year, $929,719 second year, and then third year, their unrestricted is $1, oh, I have, I think it's $1,598,600.
That's a big jump there. It'd be helpful to understand the percentage, like, within the last five years. To me, that's a factor in a decision, the solvency of the organization in regards to them scaling. I don't know if that was data that was presented during the charter review team's, you know, look at this.
The school opened, their first year of operation was 2020, so we only have those three years of history.
Gotcha.
Their next financial is due, and the district will get it in September, but it's my understanding that it continues to be a healthy fund balance.
And how long has the Hillsborough school been in existence? Same, the same timeframe? Okay, good to know.
And I have not looked at the Hillsborough, I was just looking at the K-8, but if you need me to, I can.
I don't think I need that one in particular at this point, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's all the questions I have, Superintendent Hyde, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sharpless.
I was wondering if you could answer what evidence there is for demand for this school? Is there, that parents in the area seem to want this?
There's pages, if you look at the application, which is about this tall, and there's pages of notes, comments from parents. There seems to be a real desire to have the school from the parents that have children attending the K-8 school. So the need is there. I think they did a good job presenting that need.
Okay, and I just want to put on record, I'm somewhat concerned that less than 60% of the committee actually voted on this. 10 out of 17, that is a concern of mine. I just, I would like to see a better participation in our charter review team.
And, you know, generally, we do. In the first meeting, it was a fabulous meeting, where most of the dialogue and discussion takes place. Unfortunately, the timing, because you have a statutory deadline to have this before you as the board to make a decision, the timeline was just not beneficial this round, unfortunately. In my 10 years, I've never had to have to come the last week of school and try to gather your folks, who truly have their own job and their own mission to the organization. And so the timing was just most unfortunate, but please understand, the first meeting, lots of great dialogue, lots of participation in the first meeting, and that's generally where you get the idea of what way the committee, or not the committee, the team, I'm sorry, is heading, and you get a really good idea and sense, at least I do, to go back and then dig in deeper in some different areas where they voiced their concerns during that first meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to interject, I'd like to say I appreciate the fact that you recognize that the calendar is what created an issue. This is not the fact that staff did not feel committed to the process, and respectfully, I would support that and advocate aggressively for my own staff. At that last week of school, they do have better things to be doing than to be sitting in a charter review committee, because we're trying to close out schools, we're trying to finalize testing, we're trying to do all kinds of things, not just to close out the school year, but to start to ramp up for the upcoming school year already. And so I think that's important to note, that scheduling these is incredibly, it's an important process, and one that we need to be a little bit more thoughtful about, even if we have to help you with getting some other dates and times available for staff to meet with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wyatt.
Thank you. I know it's a timing issue that's been caused by changing that there's not a deadline anymore in February. Is there anything that we can do in the future if we let them know, hey, you know? You can have this review in May, however, there's not going to be that many people, you know? We realize that it's a challenge with scheduling, that they could grant us an extension, or is that not allowed under statute?
So we can ask them, most certainly, for an extension, however, if they do not agree, we're still bound by the 90 days. Now, just so you know, they did, based on the board, how the work sessions and board meetings work in the summer, we are actually going over our 90 days by the board vote in July. They did graciously extend to meet that deadline, so that we were not out of compliance. It does become very tricky with limited board work sessions and board meetings in the summer, and then meeting board agenda, meeting deadlines. It is very tricky, and we all have competing priorities, and it becomes a challenge.
Okay, it may just be something that we want to let them know in the future, if it's planning to come, you know, it has to come before the team in May. This is the challenge that we're up against. Would you want us to move forward in May, knowing that there could only be nine or 10 people there? Would you rather do it in June, to at least give them that option, so that they understand the timing issue?
And they currently had 916 students enrolled last year.
Thank you.
And approved for 1,000 for next year.
Ms. Fields.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your objectivity and being able to look at the entire situation and showing the positives and the negatives. And I want to thank the Charter School Review Committee for their work as well, because I know that's not an easy thing to do. I think one of my concerns was the fund balance, and you talked about that when Dr. Allen referenced it. So I'm thinking that even if they were to come in a negative, I'm just assuming that they think that because they have that fund balance, they'd be able to draw from that. I don't know that. So I guess my question is, when you make your recommendation and you look at the whole situation in its entirety, it's a stand-alone application, it's not based on what they might have in another area? Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, I think that Ms. Amato was really lenient to allow them to submit a letter after the fact. If that letter had said, yes, we are delaying that debt service for two years, I would be standing here giving you a very different presentation. But because they could not provide that in written evidence, we have to go back to the facts, and the facts at the time were, they submit, you know, I mean, to put capital outlay and CSP grant money in a budget, none of their other applications have included those two areas. I mean, I've been doing this 20 years, you just don't put unguaranteed revenue in your budget and say, trust us, we'll take care of it. The other thing is if they do rely, and the law does allow them to rely on their other funding balance at the K-8 school, there's some parameters that are set forth in their bond that they have to adhere to. They have to have 45 days of cash on hand, they have to have a bond ratio, and I don't have this in front of me, I hope it's 1.5, no, 1:1, I think, I don't know what it is, but theirs is currently 1.52. They're not within the range of what the bond is expecting. I'm sorry, my notes are over here. And there was a third thing that they also had to do, though, they had to have a special revenue fund for their bond. So there's some things that, if they were to take some funding, which they're allowed to do from their K-8, how does that impact their bond? Well, we don't know that. We don't have that discussion, you know, we don't have that understanding, but there are some parameters in which they have to operate in order to keep that bond in compliance as well. So back to your point, Ms. Fields, the recommendation was made on what the team saw at the time, what was presented to them in the application. And again, I go back to the fact, they could have provided in the narrative a better discussion as to what was happening with the bond activity, but that wasn't even mentioned, and that would have probably given the team a better understanding. But after the fact, to say we have a fix for it is usually not something that's allowable in this process.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
There are no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amato is up next to Charter Administration. Ms. Amato is up next to Charter Administrative Services Guide.
So this is... Good afternoon again. This is super quick. So, as you know, we collect charter administrative fees from all of the charter schools based on where they fall into the statute language. So the guide that you have in front of you is a revision. The last revision came to you in 2021. It outlines what services we provide to the charter schools at no additional expense because we collect that administrative service fee. There are also things outlined in there that if the charter school wants to participate, they are more than welcome to, but there will be a separate fee, and it'll be a contracted service. So we provided you the actual page and then a summary of all the documented changes.
Dr. Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Amato. Looking at the documents, it says that we can collect up to 5% and up to 2%. So where are we at as far as percentage-wise and administrative fees that we're collecting?
So it's a variety based on statute language. So ESE schools, we only collect 2%. High-performing schools, we collect 3%. So it is sliding scales dictated by statute.
Okay. I mean, I'd be interested in knowing the amount of funds that we collect.
So last year, we collected just under 1.1 million.
Okay. All right.
And we report that annually to the state.
Thank you.
Ms. Amato, there are no further questions. Next item before the board is charter contract renewals. Ms. Amato?
Good afternoon again. All right, last one, I promise. All right, so we do have five contracts before you today. They also will be coming to the board this evening. Please note the first four, Janie Howard, you approved back in January to renew for five years. Polk Avenue approved to renew for five years. Buck North and Lake Wells High School approved for 10. These are standard template contracts provided by DOE. We fill in the blank, and then we move forward with any specific negotiations. So, for example, in Janie Howard, Polk Avenue, and Lake Wells, we ensured that we put, that they're going to target the greater Lake Wells area to ensure that they are honoring the purpose of their charter. For Buck North, back in their very original contract, there was language that said that their targeted population would be the Lake Wells students, and they would not seek students outside of the Lake Wells area until they've exhausted their waitlist for Lake Wells students. So in conversation with the principal, she was still in agreement. So that language was transferred from their previous contract to their new contract. And then the final contract up for this evening is the Polk State Lakeland contract. It was renewed for five years. Please note, this contract does reflect a name change. So their new name will be Polk State Lakeland Gateway to College Collegiate High School. So after the approval this evening, their new MSID application form will be sent to the state so that the state recognizes that they do have an official name change.
Ms. Miller?
I just want to take this opportunity to once again thank the new superintendent of Lake Wells and all of Lake Wells for the relationship that we currently have with that district. I think this is more collaboration than I've ever seen, and I love that Polk County students are one. So I just wanted to take this opportunity, and thank you for the work you do with these multiple applications.
There are no further questions, Ms. Amato. Thank you very much. Next item, board members, is the Comprehensive Evidence-Based Reading Plan. At this time, I'd like to bring Victoria McKenzie, Senior Director of K-12 Literacy, forward. Good afternoon.
I brought a partner with me. This is Diane Ploud, and she is a Secondary Literacy Curriculum Specialist. She has worked diligently in making sure we capture everything in the document that we're doing. So I just wanted to have her up here and thank her publicly for all she's done for it. So, good afternoon. Today, we're going to review briefly. I know you have a packed agenda, the K-12 Comprehensive Evidence-Based Reading Plan for the 23-24 school year. Historically, as outlined by the Florida Department of Education's Just Read Florida, a district's K-12 SERP is submitted annually and is the district's plan for improving student outcomes and reading, and includes the district's approach to leadership, professional development, coaching, assessment, instruction, and intervention as it relates to reading. This year, there have been revisions to the rule that outlines the requirements of the SERP. First, the requirement for having the FDOE reviewer approve the plan has been removed and has been replaced with a school board review and approval. The FDOE requirement to use their provided template has also been removed, although this year we have decided to continue to use that template. Within the FDOE template, there are eight sections, and they are on your screens, I won't read them to you. But it takes a look at all of the things that are comprehensive and what we need for our reading plan moving forward. Section 1 is contact information. It has us look at the main reading contact, who they need to contact in terms of that data piece, who's been assigned to think about and work with the third grade promotion, and then the MTSS contact as well. Section 2 reflects the district's budget for the evidence-based reading allocation. Currently, the FDOE has asked that we submit our plan based on last year's budget using FAST PM2 data. Our assumption is, is that once they do standard setting at the end of July, we'll get a better idea of what, you know, including that PM3 data. The allocation is created to provide comprehensive reading instruction to students in pre-K through 12th grades, and can include salaries and benefits, professional development, assessment, programs, materials, tutoring, and incentives. Section 3 asks that clear and measurable student literacy goals for grades pre-K through 10 are established based on FAST. These goals should increase over the previous years. And once again, as a reminder, this data is still reflective of PM2 until FDOE requests that we make the change and include PM3. This portion of the SERP also outlines literacy leadership at both the district and school level, including the requirements for the establishment of school-based literacy leadership Part 4 of the SERP looks at literacy coaches, school-based. Requirements for school-based literacy coaches. We use the Just Read Literacy Coach Model. School-based coaches engage in activities such as modeling and training of effective instructional strategies. Coaching and mentoring teachers, engagement in the school's leadership team, literacy leadership team. They collect and use data to inform and implement professional learning activities, and they ensure that evidence-based reading strategies and programs grounded in the science of reading are implemented with fidelity at their school site. The next section of SERP asks how we, as a district, will work to implement Florida's formula for success, which is six components of reading plus four types of assessment plus tier-one core plus tier-two intervention plus tier-three intensive intervention. The intervention piece we'll get to in just a slide or two, and that's the section of the plan that has seen the most growth this year moving into the 23-24 school year. Section 5 also asks districts to develop an assessment curriculum decision tree to demonstrate how data will be used to determine specific reading instructional needs and interventions for students in grades K through 12. Additional information regarding assessment data is on pages 11 through 27 of the plan that I believe was attached for you all to review. So here, we're into the good part. The last portion of Section 5 looks at curriculum and instruction. Currently, elementary schools use Florida Wonders in K-5 as their core curriculum, and secondary schools use Study Sync as their core curriculum. The intervention piece is the truly exciting part moving into the upcoming school year. Last year, we implemented corrective reading in roughly 51 schools throughout the district as a reading intervention for schools or for students in grades 3 through 10. In the 23-24 school year, we are adding an additional 21 schools. That's where it currently sits. And I'd like to take a minute just right now to thank the senior directors and the senior coordinators of the Division of Schools. They have gone to roughly 72 schools and administered diagnostic tests to students who were identified as possibly needing corrective reading. It's been an enormous undertaking, and they have just risen to the occasion and done a phenomenal job to ensure that students are appropriately placed in the correct intervention. Currently, there are roughly 16,000 students that have tested in at these 72 schools. Moving into the upcoming school year, we are going to be implementing Language for Learning and Reading Mastery, or SIPs, for students in grades K through 2. Language for Learning will focus on the development of oral language skills, and the other two programs, Reading Mastery or SIPs, will work on teaching phonemic awareness, sound letter correspondence, progress into fluency vocabulary, and moving into comprehension from there. Section 6 asks us to talk about professional development. Professional development for reading intervention will continue to be a big focus for this upcoming school year. Last year, there were 25 training sessions offered for corrective reading to ensure that teachers were appropriately trained on this intervention. As reading intervention continues to be a priority focus, we will once again provide professional development and follow-up to teachers throughout the year. In continuing to fine-tune our practice to meet student need, we will ensure that teachers are trained on the right interventions, whether it's Language for Learning and/or Reading Mastery or SIPs, which includes follow-up with classroom observations, coaching and modeling. And currently, the kindergarten camps throughout, summer camps throughout the district, those teachers were all, 133 of them, trained on Language for Learning. So we have a good foundation moving into the next school year for teachers that are already trained and ready to go. Section 7, we're almost done, outlines a few of the district-wide tutoring options available to students and families. Varsity Tutoring provides one-on-one virtual tutoring. Reading Pals is provided in conjunction with the United Way. AmeriCorps Polk Readers is in partnership with the Polk Education Foundation, and Teen Trend Setters is in coordination with the Barbara Bush Foundation. And finally, Section 8 is family engagement. The SERP focuses on family engagement strategies that the district will use to engage families in literacy and includes resources from Just Read Florida, the Florida Center for Reading Research, Media Services Resources, the New World's Reading Initiative, and Title One Family Engagement Programs.
Ms. Miller?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The interventions that you have, are those also used in our center schools? Are they differentiated instruction?
There was a... In the center?
I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
We're working with Ms. Castles and Ms. Peters to ensure that they are being implemented within those, yes.
My other question is, I hear from third-grade reading teachers that use corrective reading, that it's helpful, but not for students that are multiple grade levels behind. Can you talk about how SIPs, how they partner, how they prepare a student for third grade? There seems to be, from teachers who are giving third-grade reading tests, that we're having to give tests to students who, that we have to make up that gap in their learning loss for a lot of reasons. But can you just talk about how that interventions that are going to happen in K-1 and 2 will support what's happening in K-3?
So I think that historically, you chase a reading problem. You get kids in third grade, and then all of a sudden, we're trying to remediate and make sure that they're on grade level. So when backing up to K-2, we'll catch kids before their deficiencies become something we're actually chasing. So if we look at kids who have, going into kindergarten or first grade, an oral language deficit, that's the foundational piece for all reading. So if it's an oral language deficit, we can address that through Language for Learning, then get them into that reading mastery piece, where they'll work on, you know, the phonics and the fluency and those types of activities, and become better readers before they get to third grade. The idea is to run corrective right out of the district, quite frankly, and we need to do that by intervening early.
I'm glad you said the whole phonics piece. That seems, I don't know there was a time where we didn't apply that, and we are seeing the results of not using that, just statewide. So I appreciate that this is going to focus on that phonics piece as a kindergarten, previous kindergarten teacher, that K-1 and 2 is so important. Are these the only interventions that are allowed? I know we have people that have used other programs, they're really, you know, and this might be a high question. And I've witnessed the programs, and I've watched the students' interaction, and yes, it looks very successful. But as a district, is this what we do for data collection, that these are what's going to be available to students and teachers?
So I think historically, schools have been allowed to kind of pick their own interventions as they've gone, and that hasn't allowed us to have any real idea of what's working because there have been a wide variety of students and a wide variety of data coming in. I think we're trying to, like, par down to some that they're successful with students so we can kind of just get a gauge on if we implement effectively, if we follow up effectively, what are we seeing from students as a result of that?
The board will recall that last year, the Assessment Accountability Team, led by Mr. Green, Deputy Superintendent, conducted a thorough analysis of all of our interventions. We had over 17, many of which were not even research-based. So we did eliminate all of those. The only reading interventions at Tier 2 that were retained were those that actually had an effect change or resulted in an effect, a change for our students and supported, again, through research-based methodology. Moving forward to one of your earlier questions, Ms. Miller, that there still are Tier 3 interventions being reviewed for specific students such as Barton and others, but are very time and personnel-intensive because they require one-on-one between an adult and a student. So there's a lot of intensive training has to take place, as well as, you know, staffing and flexibility and scheduling needs that have to be addressed, which is why Tier 3 interventions and the manner in which we assign students' interventions has to be very carefully reviewed and analyzed. All of these programs, we capture and analyze their data. Corrective reading, I would love to have a conversation with any third-grade teacher that says it doesn't meet the needs of students who are multiple years below grade level because the benefit of corrective reading, especially at our elementary schools right now and feeding into middle and high, is that, for example, if a child requires a certain level of support in corrective reading, that child can very easily be assigned to a different classroom that supports that level of instruction. The teacher's not being asked to support corrective level A, B, B1, C1, C2. That's never being asked of our staff. So, in fact, back to the point that Mrs. McKenzie pointed out earlier, our staff proactively go out at the end of every school year and reassess students to ensure adequate and proper placement prior to the start of the upcoming school year. And we've identified, as she noted, over 16,000 students, many of whom weren't even on our radar and weren't receiving any intervention previously. And so, the only thing that has to change, and we had this conversations mid-year when we met for DataCom, and I was very proud to hear that a handful of our schools had already adopted this philosophy, but that corrective reading is not a stagnant program, and students are not relegated to that class at that level for the entirety of the school year. As students start to demonstrate progression and mastery, they should be allowed to request to be reassessed and then reassigned to a higher level, ultimately exiting from the program and just focusing then, at that point, on comprehension strategies within a different type of reading environment. So the program is intended to incentivize students so that they can pursue that the more investment that they make and more effort they place and the more learning that takes place, they can exit that reading classroom much faster. But it does allow for teachers to differentiate at every single grade level for those students. And so, again, if that's something we need to help clarify for third-grade teachers that you've been speaking to, be happy to do so, or happy to have Ms. McKenzie circle back around and have, or her team circle back around and have that conversation with them. Because the manner in which it functions and the manner in which we've established it here in this school district is based off years of research and successful utilization elsewhere.
I think if we have pockets that are doing that, that we probably should make sure that that's extended to the other schools. Because we don't, it's just like the whole MTSS all the way through. You don't stay in a tier for a long amount of time. You have to move on to give them the right supports. So I appreciate your explanation today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McKenzie, I see no further questions.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you very much. I was going to do one more item on technical changes, and then we could ask for a break. I need, respectfully, I have to give the IT team several minutes' notice so they can set up the system to go to break. So I'm doing that now virtually. We will be taking a break after item number seven. At this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Steve Cochran, Senior Director for Career Pathways. He's also joined by Hunter Gambrell, Senior Coordinator for Workforce Operations. They're here to talk about the technical refund, college refund policy. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. I'm going to let, Mr. Gambrell has done most of the labor work on this, so I'm going to let him speak to us. Good afternoon, board members. We're asking for a change in our refund policy for our technical colleges. Currently, we have it set up to where students can get a prorated refund up to the 30th day of dropping. We want to bring that more into industry alignment and say that after the fifth day of enrollment, students will no longer get a refund. So what it would initiate, if a student initiated a withdrawal prior to the first-day class, they get 100% refund. If they initiate it after the first-day class but before that fifth-day class, they get a 75% refund, and there's no refund after that. We're also asking for credit card fees to be added into our financial transactions. We're asking for a 1.55% plus 22 cents per transaction, and that'll help us bring in some credit card fees that the banks, the bank is currently charging us, sorry. Any questions?
Mr. Gambrell, if you would, at the end, at the bottom, and I don't know if you have the same notifications in front of you. I think it's important to note that during the school year 21-22... the school year 21-22, we were charged over $16,000 in bank fees, and that during this school year, we were charged over almost $18,500. So the reality of this is, is we need to restructure. We've also had, um, and the board has, will vote on this, but they've also had to write off certain, uh, a failure to payment as well. And we have a process in place where individuals are referred to collection agency because they've committed to a class. Part of the difficulty we have with providing, and I'm pleased to see a change in our refund policy, because after day five, we've committed to those class sizes. And so we really need those students to remain committed to the courses, um, that they're in, because that's how we staff the schools. Um, so it's incredibly important for us, moving forward, to have a policy that's a little bit more reflective of, as you said, of the industry standard. So I just wanted to add that, that, you know, there has been almost a $2,500 increase in our bank fees just in the last year alone, so.
And, and per state statutes, this has to come back before the board for action, so it'll come back in the July, uh, board meeting for action.
I see Mr. Sharpless.
Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate, uh, you including the, the links to the, at the bottom to the policies from Manatee County, Orange County, and Osceola County, um, just to show us that this is actually industry standard and you guys are following, you know, what's out there. So I just wanna say thank you for that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask on the credit card fees, is that what we are charged? Is the 1.55% or is that a discounted rate?
It varies, it varies based on the actual card, so like Visa, Discover, um, it varies based on that. So it's a average of those two.
Average, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking at that too as we move forward. So next year, it could change if we're, if, if those fees go up.
Ms. Fields?
When is this effective and how are we gonna roll it out so that everyone would know the change? Cause this thing's significant change from 30, uh, days of withdrawal notice to, to five.
Yes, ma'am. So all of our programs are set up, or I should say that most of our programs are set up to complete in a year. So it will affect the students that are coming into this cohort that's starting in August. So once we roll it out, any, any invoice that's created after the board approval date will include those credit card fees and this new refund policy. It'll also be printed on the bottom of all invoices.
Thank you.
No further questions, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Board members, members of the audience and staff, we will take a brief 10-minute recess at this time, or 15-minute recess. Let's do that.
Class of 2018, please rise.
Haynes City High cheered on a pint-sized student in graduation this year. Two-year-old Abel joining his mom, Maria Hernandez. Abel's been a part of Haynes City's on-campus childcare program since his infancy.
He woke up with me every morning. A baby of three months shouldn't be having to come to school and waking up early in the morning, and I feel it's, it's a big thing for him too, you know? Open the door? He came to school every day with me and had to go through everything, just like me, tired and frustrated every day. There was days that I was crying in the parking lot. I was crying in the parking lot, wondering like, should I just be done with this? Like, should I just leave, go to work, and I'll just go back to school? And just seeing him like, looking at my face, I'm like, why would I leave school and then come back when I can just finish right now?
Oh, Abel's been with us since he was a little baby. A little baby. And he's now in our two-year-old classroom. And he is a pistol.
And again, and again, and again. Again, again, again. Ready? Set, go.
The school's free childcare program offered Maria a spark of hope, with on-campus services putting her education within reach. Without it...
I was already living with myself, so that was another big thing. I was wondering, how expensive was the baby? How hard was it? Would I have to get another job? Um, I have to leave school. Um, my husband, he's in college, and he had two jobs already, so I was wondering how we were gonna tumble having a baby, you know, if we would have time for the baby or anything. Abel! I love you more. He'll say, "No, me more, me more." I'm trying to give my son a better life. Most moms don't make it through high school even, and it's something that the statistics say all the time, saying that, "Once you have a child, you leave school." I didn't wanna be that. I didn't wanna be another statistic.
Well, Maria's amazing. This is my third year here, so I've known her for three years. Now to see her as a senior, uh, what she's accomplished is just amazing, and her dedication to be here every day, her commitment to bring her son to baby hornet care, and to come see him at lunch, pick him up after school, like, her son is truly a student here.
They try to teach him the basics, colors, letters. He's very smart.
Did he, um, did he start to walk in the daycare?
Yeah.
Did he?
Yeah. He, he came here at three months and exactly at when he started walking. And I stood there and just watching him, and he grew up here. Basically, this is like his house, cause he's been here all his life, every day, every day.
It does help us to build their parenting skills, because they're young. So, um, we get an opportunity to be a part of that and helping them as the child grows. There may be questions that they may have, or they may need advice, but that does help us, um, to be able to assist them as well.
The value of having the teen parent program is they understand the importance of graduating high school, and they instilling their own children the importance of graduating high school, because mom did it so I can make sure, or instilling my baby that I, you can do it as well. Not every girl fits a traditional school setting. Not every girl fits a location here at one of our centers, like Travis Technical College. Um, we've had girls that go into our Fresh Start Program, we've had girls that go into our Acceleration Academy, and I believe because Polk County has so many options for these girls to be successful, it is their only option.
She'll say it's hard, you know, to, to raise a son on her own, to have not only one job, but two jobs, and to get her homework done, and to come to school, and to go through testing and meet graduation requirements. There are so many things. But every time she said she felt like she couldn't do it, all she had to do was look at her son, and that was inspiration enough that, "I gotta get that diploma, and I gotta get this done."
You know, the same faces you see every day, they become like family to you. Like even, not my blood, but they're, they become your family. Honestly, they're, they're taking care of my son, you know? They're taking that responsibility, you know? They're giving me the opportunity to come to school, and I really thank them every day about it.
For more information about the teen parent program and to discover ways Polk County Public School is putting students first, visit our website at polk-fl.net and keyword search teen parents.
I just wanted to take this honor to address our drivers and attendants. It takes a, a special person to do what you do on a daily basis, and you are special people. There are very few that have your gifts. You are transporting our most precious cargo, and that cargo may not be so precious while they're on your bus, but you do it with grace and honor, and for that, you need to be commended. Many of you transport some of our most fragile students, and you do it with attention to detail on each of their individual needs as a bus driver and attendant team. Please note that what you do on a daily basis doesn't go unnoticed, and to have a family trust you to transport their child to and from school safely is a wonderful honor.
You operate your buses transporting over 47,000 students to and from school, to give them the opportunity for a great education, so they can become contributors to our society. Each and every day, you do this safely, with the challenges that you have with traffic patterns, the seasonal traffic, and the expanding exploding growth of our community. And we just wanna say thank you. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for your dedication to our communities.
Working for Polk County Public Schools as a bus driver or bus attendant is just a small, yet important, part of what we do to serve our students. We wanna thank all the unsung heroes of our driving force. Our dedicated trainers assist every day with educating new drivers and bus attendants, preparing them to be the best they can be. Trainers shine in assisting new hires to become safe and efficient drivers, and they teach bus attendants the essentials of their daily responsibilities. It's more than a job. Our CPR trainers and instructors teach life-saving skills, keeping everyone's certification up to date with continual training. Trainers help with CDL licensing, making sure candidates know the ins and outs of a bus, preparing them to take and pass the commercial driver's license test. Putting our students' safety first is always our top priority. The transportation team thanks everyone for their hard work and the dedication that they give to make sure the job is done. The training department would not be where we are today if it wasn't for the devotion of our trainers. If you are a dedicated, responsible, respectful, patient person with a positive attitude and a desire to help others succeed, then you are exactly who we are looking for in a trainer. Please contact the training department if you are interested in making a positive difference
I am a breast cancer survivor.
Yes.
I'm a college professor. I am a bilingual Sunday school teacher.
I am a foster dad.
I was saved by adoption and brought into a loving family.
I speak four languages: Romanian, Russian, French, and a little bit of English.
I'm Nigerian.
And I'm also from Nigeria.
Sure?
Yes, now. My parents are missionaries.
Nowao.
Nowao.
Hey!
I'm a refugee immigrant from Santa Clara, Cuba.
I'm a seventh-generation Floridian.
I am from the corn state.
I am a dog mom.
I'm the mother of a Gulf War veteran.
I'm a first-time mom.
I like to de-stress by playing the classical piano.
I am a half-marathon runner.
I am a Latin dancer.
I'm not ashamed to say it, but I am a selfie queen.
I'm training for the Escape from Alcatraz Triathlon.
I'm a grandmother. I have four grandchildren and one grand angel.
I am from Gambia. I am Muslim, and back home, I have a tribe for a family.
I am a retired Hispanic naval officer.
I ride motorcycles and rescue animals.
I was the first one in my family to graduate from college.
I'm a New Yorker and a veteran.
I am a proud Army mom.
I am the wife of a veteran.
I coach Little League baseball and softball in my community.
I'm obsessed with monogramming. Can you tell?
Yeah, man. I'm from Jamaica.
I love it. All right, say your name.
Peter McDougall.
Accent, guys.
Yep, Peter McDougall.
Yeah.
I put students first.
My name is Jessica Sharatsky, and I am living my best life teaching first grade at Willow Oaks School. I became a teacher because I honestly could not even handle the idea of leaving school when it was time to graduate, because I had such a great experience as a Polk County student. And I wanted to be able to pay forward what my teachers did for me. I want my students to have experiences that are unforgettable. I want my students to live for the school week instead of living for the weekend. So I work really hard to create experiences for them that will make them excited about coming to school every day. When people think of teaching, I think the thing that normally comes to mind is, it's a lot of hard work, and it's a lot of hours, and sometimes you can feel underpaid and you don't have the resources. But really, at the end of the day, none of that stuff matters, because what matters is the impact that you can make on your students. The blood, sweat, and tears and everything that comes with it is totally worth it, because if I can give my students an, an experience that will change their futures forever, then I think it's totally worth it.
And we are back. I will turn the meeting back over to Superintendent Haynes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to bring Steve Cochran back up. The next item we have is Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program Grants.
Good afternoon, again. Um, I'm here for the board today seeking... I'm here for today seeking support for a proposal for developing a Polk County Public Schools Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program. This is a collaborative effort between the Workforce Education Department and the Exceptional Student Education Department. So a little background on the Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program Act. It was approved by the legislature in 2016. It had four crucial elements. One, it established the Center for Students with Unique Abilities at UCF. And that center really acts as the governing board and the guidance for this grant. It provides, it establishes a post-secondary comprehensive transition programs. It funds scholarships for students to attend the approved programs. And it affunds the initial and continuing grants for institutions of higher education. So the purpose of the grant is to increase independent living, inclusive and experiential post-secondary education, and employment opportunities for students with intellectual disabilities through post-secondary education programs. To be eligible for this program, a student must have an intellectual disability, as the term is defined by this U.S. statute. They must physically be able to attend the institution. They must submit documentation regarding their intellectual disability, and they must have exited high school. Requirements for the grant is that the school has a method for determining that the student is making satisfactory academic progress, that the student is enrolled no less than half-time, that it is inclusive in context, and meaning that the students are part of the school and are a part of the program, and they're not set aside. The focus is on employment outcomes, and having the student earn a meaningful credential or industry certification. It requires that the federal comprehensive transition and post-secondary program have an application. And that is what we're working on right now. So here we are in the process. We have created the application. The one thing that we're missing for our application at this time is a letter of support from the superintendent and from the school board. That is on hold till we could present to you today. It will then go to the Center for Students with Unique Abilities at UCF, who will review it and forward it on to the Florida Department of Education. If we are approved and considered to be eligible, our students will be eligible for scholarships up to $7,000, which can be used for transportation, tuition, industry certification testing, technology, and equipment. And the school system will be eligible for the Florida Post-Secondary Grants, which will pay for personnel, curriculum material, equipment, travel, and other. The grant awards maximum up to $500,000, and it is renewable, so this program can be sustained. We have written into our proposal a model that we were shown in Fort Myers. That included a coordinator, a teacher, and a para professional. The reason I have two is we are planning to do two grants, one for Travis and one for Ridge, so that we are serving both sides of the district. We have given this program a name. We are calling our program the STEEL Program, which stands for Specialized Training Empowerment of Exceptional Learners Program. For a student to get into the program, and what we've written into our proposal, there will be an interview process. Student will then be accepted, depending on the interview and whether they meet the criteria. The program proposal is for two full years. However, it could be, it could go longer or shorter, depending on the student's ability and the progress that they're making. Within the first year, we project that they would receive specialized career instruction, working on all those soft skills, working with them on how to interact with other employees, how to do interviews. And in the second year is when we'd focus on their career and technical education program. Additionally, the students would be able to participate in our commencement ceremonies for Ridge and Travis. For the STEEL Program, we are proposing two offerings currently at each school. One for Ridge is the Network Support Services, and the second one is the Culinary Arts and Hospitality Program. At Travis, we would operate under the Administrative Office Specialist and Automotive Service Technology. Additionally, it should be noted that we can work with our local business partners on special district certifications. If a business partner comes to us and says, "I need a student that has this particular skill. Can you train them on this skill?" And we will bring them in and give them a job. So we can work on a specific skill with a student for a specific job, give them a district certification, and guarantee that student employment based on that specific skill. Okay. Additional parts of the program. We will work with the student again on the soft skills, conducting mock interviews, building resumes, public speaking, building self-confidence with the students. The major factor in this program and how we will decide how successful it is, is will the students be employed. That coordinator will not only be responsible for bringing students into the program, but also for seeing that students are placed once they've learned that skill or have that industry certification. And finally, again, they will be able to participate in all of the things that are offered at the school, not to mention, we've got the commencement ceremony here, but we expect them to be part of the CTSOs, the Career and Technical Student Organizations, and any other thing that we offer at the school that all of the students participate in, they will also participate in. So in order for us to roll this program out, again, we need the board's support. I personally think that this is, I know we've talked about win-win scenarios. This is a win-win-win. There's nothing but win about this proposal. It is great for the students. It's going to be a great opportunity for our technical colleges. It's going to be a great opportunity for our business partners, and it's going to be great for the community, because we are going to be working with these students who may not have earned a skill, and get them a skill and get them back into the community. So we're excited about the possibilities of this grant, and I'm ready to take your questions at this time.
Mr. Sharpless.
Just want to first say, I've got a couple of questions, but I really feel like this program has the opportunity to change lives, and that's what we're in this for: trajectories, giving students an actual, you know, career path, which is exciting. So my first question is, how will we market or promote this to the intended population? Because we have a great program, but if people don't know about it, it's not going to help anything.
Right. We will utilize some of the money from the grant, should we receive the grant, to have a marketing campaign. A lot of it will start with social media, but we're also, we have a very targeted audience, and we want to go directly, you know, one of the reasons that this is done in conjunction with the Special Education Department is those are the students that we are going to be reaching out to, to bring into the program. So we will obviously reach out to the organizations that support students with disabilities to bring those students into the fold. We will let it be known at our high schools, when our students with disabilities that match this profile graduate, that they would be eligible for this program. And even though, you know, the student that we're looking for is within a very narrow window, we do want the public to know about the service and what we're providing. So we will make sure that it gets out on social media to the entirety of Polk County.
Right, and my last question. The presentation states that the CTE programs areas that were selected were based on high need areas in our local workforce. I'm just wondering what data was used to determine these high need areas?
That would be completed by the local workforce development board and the areas that were identified by them as what we need, jobs that are in high need in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Hi, Mr. Cochran. Thank you for presenting this. Can you tell me if we've applied? I've known about this since 2016. Have we applied for this before?
I had been working on applying for it two years ago. I did not get the same support that I'm getting with the current leadership of the Special Education Department. So I'm very pleased when they came to me last year and said, "Hey, we'd like to do this." I said, "I was ready to go." So we had talked about doing this before. We didn't get the same traction that we needed. Got this traction now, and we are literally your letters away and a few weeks from having this grant. You know, nothing is certain in this world, but I have spoke with the director at the Center for Students with Unique Abilities. He has reviewed our application, even though it's not been submitted until you approve, but he has reviewed what we've written, and he feels very confident that we will receive this grant.
Thank you. I have a question. This seems a lot like Project Search. Is this going to be similar in the delivery model? You talked about working on soft skills. Will these students be graduated, or will they be deferring to get to this program?
They can be graduated. They do not have to be deferred, so we would prefer that they would bring their high school diploma.
Okay.
But I think that the difference here is we're going to have so much support for this program with the coordinator, the teacher. You know, we envision the teacher's going to be working with the student on the soft skills. The para is involved to go out into the classroom and help the students if they need additional assistance. And there's something else that is done commonly with this grant that we didn't put into the presentation, but money can be used to pay students within the classroom to be tutors and mentors for the students in the program. So we can actually, yeah, we can actually pay mentor, peer mentor. We can actually give bonuses to the career and technical education teacher based on how many industry certifications that they provide for the program with the students. So there's a lot of incentive money built into this program to help make it be successful.
And we'll have money for the support needs that will be added by bringing these new students into the classrooms? Like you said, the paras that may need to be in the classroom to help support the learner?
That will all be covered in the grant.
Okay. And I know that we have the buy-in, which is great. I've been at Ridge, and I've seen that they're very excited to have students with unique abilities into their programs. I did meet a parent from the other school last night who had concerns with what's available for her daughter. It's very limited, and transportation was an issue, which you just mentioned that this scholarship could help cover, to help students get to their internships or to the program. I'm really excited to see where this goes. You mentioned you had visited an area that had this implemented, which I think is important to see it working somewhere else. And I want to thank again, this is the work and legacy of Senator Andy Gardner with moving forward people in Florida with unique abilities. So I think this is something that is going to be great for our district, and I appreciate you pushing on. Even when you heard no, you kept going, and this will be available for our students soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to add, we're very excited about this, and I know you mentioned that they were excited about it, the technical colleges. Most of the legwork and all the heavy lifting that has been done to put this together and get it ready for your approval was done by two assistant directors at each site. Marcus Franklin did an exceptional job at Ridge, and Jason Hendricks at Travis did, came together, went, made the visits, had been in constant communication with myself and the Center for Unique Abilities, and did 90% of the heavy lifting on this project. And I just, I wanted to make sure that they were recognized, because I think this is going to be great for the district, and that will be due to most of their work.
Ms. Fields?
I had a couple of questions. Mr. Cochran, thank you for bringing this before us today. One of the things you talked about was the interview process for the students. Is that going to be something very simple, something that any student pretty much could breeze their way through without stress and all that wonderful stuff that comes with interviews?
Yes, and it will be most likely with the student and a parent or caretaker. And the interview will really just be to gauge their interest in coming into the program. So we are not putting that interview up as a barrier. That is just to make sure that this is where they want to be, and they're interested in being in the program. We will need to make sure that they meet those minimum qualifications on the intellectual disability and having the documentation showing that they have that. But the interview there is not a barrier. It's just to make sure that this, they know what is expected of them in the program, and that they want to come into the program willingly.
Thank you. And then my other question is, is there a possibility of offering all of the certifications at both campuses instead of just one or the other? Because it just seemed to me like if a student was interested in culinary, having to drive from Lakeland to Ridge might be a barrier for them.
We are, this is just our first-year plan. We do have plans that if we continue to get interest, to expand the program and expand the offerings within the program. But we did want to focus on two areas to make sure that we can get it off successfully, but we do plan on expanding the program should it continue to be successful.
I think it's going to be very important that we look at that, so that all the students can have an option if they so choose to be interested in one of the certifications.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Nolte?
Thank you for being here, and you've answered a couple of my questions I had previously. I just wanted to thank you and your team for the great work you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. And I did mention Jason and Marcus also. Talia Williams from the Department, the Assistant Director of our Exceptional Student Education, has been an invaluable resource and very much a team member on this project.
Thank you, sir. No further questions.
All right. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to bring up Katie Taylor, Director for School Nutrition. She is here to speak and present on the reauthorization of our Community Eligibility Provision Program.
Good afternoon. Last year, you guys gave us permission to reauthorize school nutrition in our CEP program for four years. This year, we have been very fortunate to see an increase in our students. It's fortunate, but kind of unfortunate at the same time, an increase in our direct certification qualifications for our students. So what this will allow us to do is, though we are currently operating at 100% CEP at our schools, we have 11 programs where we're only receiving the free reimbursement rate for 65% of those students. If we reauthorize this year with the new numbers, we will be able to actually receive 100% free benefit for those students, which will bring almost $1 million back into our program, which would be a great benefit for our program and allow us to offer new and exciting things to our students. For example, we're looking at a new coffee program and some really fun incentives for our students that'll help them come in and enjoy our meals. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward.
This way. I just wanted to say thank you for your diligence on bringing this back now that we have more schools that are eligible, because there's some...
There's nothing to stop you.
Yeah, there's no reason to stop us. So I appreciate you bringing this back this year.
And I will say, that's a goal of ours, is to monitor these numbers on a yearly basis. Even if we're 100% next year and the numbers are exactly the same, we will continue to reauthorize, because when we reauthorize, that gives us the ability to offer this program for four years. So next year, it may be that we're at 98%, but we're locked in for four years. So, next year it may be that we're at 98%, but we're locked in for four years. So, we're going to continue to do this every year and review those numbers.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
I just think it's a great opportunity that we've been doing for some years now. So, thank you for the continued vision of it. And I just think that unfortunately, some people don't understand the value of it and still confuse it, I think, with how we used to do things back in the day. So, just keep encouraging and making sure that the information is out there and folks understand exactly what we're doing. I think it's going to be very good for our students so that every student can eventually and will eventually participate.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
There are no further questions.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Next item before the board is Hazel Healthcare. Board may recall, excuse me, that we implemented Hazel Healthcare to provide both telehealth and teletherapy resources to our families. It was very crucial, especially during the time of COVID. That year, we returned to education or traditional education post-COVID. There were still high numbers within our community, a lot of concern about how do we make sure that students are not exposing others, including staff? So, we provided this and we were very successful in our initial first-year deployment. And what we found, as if you recall, was that primarily utilization occurred outside the school day. While this is best facilitated at a school setting with the school nurse, where a school nurse can be present, we did find that overwhelmingly the utilization leaned towards before school or after school with a lot of parental involvement. We also shared data with you last year specific to the fact that the number of physical health visits actually that ultimately translated into actual mental health referrals was quite alarmingly high. This year, I'm proud to share, and there's a data, there's a PowerPoint presentation attached in here that has all this data, but total physical health visits this year exceeded 5,000 total visits for our school year. We averaged 700 to 800 visits on a rolling 30-day basis this quarter. Towards the end of the school year, we were averaging over 800 visits. Physical health visits have increased by 133% over the 2021, 2021 school year. Mental health referrals have increased by 72% over the 21, 22 school year. The second year of our partnership has yielded an increase in school buy-in. Student services has become instrumental, has become and been instrumental in physical health success. All of our schools continue to be equipped with the mental health iPads so in-school hours would allow for more students to be seen during the school day. Again, all of this requires parental consent and not just consent at the beginning of the year. Parents can allow or retract consent at any time throughout the year for both physical health and/or mental health supports. It's important to point out too that Hazel Healthcare provides a direct referral process. It's alarming, the amount of time it takes to schedule a student for a non-emergency issue for mental health typically in our county and others can range from anywhere from four to seven months to get that appointment. What Hazel Healthcare can do is cut through some of the red tape that after their guaranteed three appointments and supports that they can provide for a student or any time during that first initial visit where they deem it's appropriate and/or necessary, they will make an immediate referral to an outside partnership agency. We've seen a lot of success with that. And then, if you'll recall, some of the initial concern in the community about referrals was that Hazel Healthcare would take away from the local supports and local contractors. In fact, if it's done anything, it's served to supplement them. One of the other additional benefits, if you recall, for Hazel Healthcare, especially during the initial implementation, was that many of our physicians' offices were turning away, turning away our students and families when they basically said, listen, if you have COVID-like symptoms, assume you have COVID. If you're still ill after 10 days, then we'll take the office visit. And part of that was to help reduce the amount of point of contact between multiple individuals and add to possible transmission events. And so, we were able to fill that void for a significant period of time. Moving forward, we continue, as I said, to see significant increases in both physical health and mental health supports. The board was also very inquisitive and asked me several times, was there an option for our employees in this regard? Now, our school district does provide a telehealth option for our employees. We do not offer a teletherapy option for our employees. However, Hazel Healthcare has recently partnered with another agency that specializes in providing mental health teletherapy services for adults. And so, we are currently reviewing that for possible inclusion in this. Moving forward, the recommendation is going to be to continue to renew this for one additional year. This is supplemented fully by Hazel, or by our funds and ESSR dollars, so there's no cost to the district. Moving forward, we'll continue to work with Hazel. They will identify and provide based off some questions that were submitted by Dr. Allen. We'll create a heat map of the school district to identify those schools that have the highest utilization so that if we do make the decision post-grant funding, we'll have, make the difficult decision to either go internally and find the funding or to seek additional options. Part of that may require the retraction or consolidation of the utilization and again, to target those schools and communities that have the highest utilization. And so, we'll be talking with them and I'll be providing that information to you. So, total for this year, 2021 to 2022 for mental health visits, at-home visits constituted in 2021 to 2022 constituted for mental health visits constituted, 97% of them were done at home. Thus far this school year, for 1400 visits, they're all 100% were done at home. So, parents are finding that they, the utilization, especially for mental health, is largely done or completely done at home in the comfort of their home and they find a great deal of success with that. We've not had any complaints. In fact, board members, over the last two years, I have forwarded you on occasion messages from both staff and from parents praising the program and its utilization because it does not take away from local effort or local physician network. It simply serves as an enhancement. So, again, the recommendation that I'll be making that the board will vote on in July will be to officially renew the Hazel Healthcare program in its current capacity. We do pay a significantly reduced cost. I think it's important to point that out. Whereas most school districts now pay upwards of $17 per student, we pay 10 because we were one of the initial pilot districts. $10 is what they charge comprehensively for the physical health. They charge another $7 for mental health. So, there are districts much larger than ours across the nation that are paying that full cost of 17. We have a current premium price at $10. And again, that's because we were one of the early adopters and willing to serve as a pilot district for the company. So, again, I'll take any questions at this time. Or not? So, seeing no questions? Board members, as you know, we have several weeks between our, this meeting and the next one, so if any questions arise. I know that Dr. Allen and I have discussed about how to drill down into this data a little bit more precisely and I think if you look at the PowerPoint, you'll be pleased with the data they've supplied thus far based off our conversations yesterday. Additionally, if there's anything else that you feel that you'd like to see, I'm anxious to see the heat map, to see where the highest utilizations are so that if we do move forward in the board, I would make a recommendation to continue this level of support for our community, although I know we can't afford it globally. So, we'd have to be a little bit more target and strategic in how we approach this. And there are other grants and funding mechanisms that we could bring to bear to help offset this. Medicare reimbursements, also an opportunity for us to consider moving forward. Thank you for your time on that topic. Next item is Civic Solutions Group, LLC learning, or learning support with Medicaid. So, Ms. Castles, Assistant Superintendent for Learning Support will please come forward.
Good afternoon, Ms. Castles.
Good afternoon. Superintendent Hyde, Board Chair Wyatt, school board members, good afternoon. Civic Solutions Group is a fee-for-service billing company that also provides training to district staff for Medicaid billing. If you look at the contract, the Civic Solutions Group is a group that will be a new group to us. In the past, we have used what's called Public Consulting Group and we were, we are requesting that we amend that contract and adopt the contract for Civic Solutions. And I will go over the differences between the prices and then what is provided to us. So, Civic Solutions is also known as Max Capture and the price for the service would be $50,400 a year. And the Public Consulting Group is $113,700 per year and it's, that's an average because it's based on the amount of billing that takes place. Civic Solutions will provide onsite, on-demand professional development where at the current time, Public Consulting Group will only provide virtual. And for Civic Solutions, they have a dedicated rep that has been with the company for over 20 years. And this past year, we had four different reps that provided support from the Public Consulting Group. And in an effort to make sure that we can, we can report on the data that we have and make sure that we understand the reporting that's taking place at this school, we're asking for on-demand reports. That's been difficult for the current company to provide to us, but we're being told they have reputable data and with the product of Civic Solutions. The managed fee for service and admin claiming will be completed by Civic Solutions and it's also completed by the Public Consulting Group, but the difference is, is that the random moment time sampling will also be provided by Civic Solutions. Any questions?
There are. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I, is this something that we're going to need long-term? Because my question is, I know we're increasing our Medicaid billing. We weren't doing that and we were leaving dollars on the table for a very long time in ESE. And I, this is one of the first contracts that I brought to Mr. Green, I think, when I, when he got here because I was concerned of the, what we were receiving for the investment we were making because it was minimal. And so, my question is, at the time, I thought this was used to mainly train our staff, but this is actually going to be a, this is going to service the Medicaid billing. It's not going to, it's not just continuous training. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, they manage the fees for the service and then they provide monthly reports so that we can then make sure that it's happening, you know, on a monthly basis. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
But the goal, I think, this part to extend Ms. Miller's question, the goal is to eventually through their, their professional development support that we would wean off of this company, reliance on this company because our own internal staff would be better suited to provide the billing, correct?
Yes, sir. And they provide, yes, sir, and they provide training per group.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Fields?
I would, I was wondering if we could have a copy of the comparison that you just read, please, ma'am? That would be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I guess my other question, and it might be here and I'm just not remembering it, is when are we going to be expected to vote on this, Superintendent Hyde?
This will come before the board in July.
Okay. So, if I could have that before, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We should have a Parks Meal of Month, Ms. Fields, between now and that next meeting. Ms. Castles, I know you and I had an initial conversation when we were going through this review the other day. Again, could you just, I don't, I didn't hear you say it to the board. Would you just share with them again what our monthly savings would be?
So, the monthly savings would be $9,400 a month, based on the averages. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Allen?
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Ms. Castles, thank you for bringing this forward. I was curious if you, if you have any idea of how much reimbursement we're missing out on? I mean, when, when they're looking at our district as a potential vendor, you know, did they give you any, any insight into? Because obviously they have, within that contract, right? So, we're looking at the base $50,000, the scaffolded amount that we would occur, right? As far as cost, but obviously that's offset by how much is being brought back into the district.
Yes, sir. So, for this cost that we would be paying, that would be up to $400,000 for, for the fees for service billing per month. If it went over that, there's an additional fee as well. But I know there was also a study that was done prior to my arrival.
So, if I recall the numbers correctly, Dr. Allen, and this was also shared in part of the recent ESE audit, that we were not billing sufficiently, but I believe the numbers were anywhere from between $2 and $4 million are being left on the table each year due to a lack of billing. Now, part of that was complicated because of the manner in which we staffed or placed staff within the overall budget. Staff who are funded out of federal programs dollars are not eligible to seek reimbursement, if I remember correctly, Ms. Castles. However, those that are funded out of the general budget are. So, we made that fiscal change for this upcoming school year so that all of our employees who provide direct services to students are now in a position to direct bill back for Medicaid for the reimbursement. All of those dollars would be line itemed back to that department. That department is in significant need to continue to increase its overall staffing and capacity at the schools. And so, we have stated and we remain committed that every dollar that's brought in would be reinvested within that department, either through staff or through resources to provide the best supports for our students and our staff, our instructional staff as needed.
Great, thank you. I shared with you, Superintendent Hyde, earlier this morning, it was just, this was actually a point of conversation at the FSBA Board of Directors and I think was within the last two weeks, the Department of Health and Human Services basically had issued new guidance to make it easier for schools to bill Medicaid. So, really appreciate you and the work on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
I wanted to know if there are any other departments under learning support that are currently billing for Medicaid? And my other question is, do we have anybody on staff specifically that is assigned to nothing but billing?
Ms. Castles?
Yes, ma'am. So, so there are multiple staff members that are responsible for billing Medicaid and I can provide that information to you as well. Psychologists, social workers, we also receive reimbursement for transportation and we, and so speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists as well. And we, and then as far as a person who provides support, yes, ma'am. The senior manager of Medicaid is Akimi Mayo and she does a phenomenal job providing support and keeping the data. She's, she's been.
Basically, just her by herself?
She's been an integral part in collecting the data and making sure that we have an understanding of what's going on and then we can actually follow up. So, it's a collective effort, but she is the one that oversees it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's a lot.
It is a lot. She does a phenomenal job.
I think we should clarify though, because I don't want Ms. Fields or anybody else to believe that she alone is responsible for all Medicaid or Medicare billing. What she would do is identify the opportunities or places where we have gaps. She would then function through the rest of the senior admin team, the compliance monitors and directors, senior directors, to ensure that that then gets pushed down into those schools. Because again, some individuals now are going to have the expectation that they submit billing who previously did not have that as an expectation because of how they were paid. They were ineligible to bill for services. So, that's changing. So, it's not, there's one person overarching, but then that individual helps, gets, helps drive the message down through the organization to ensure compliance across the district.
And I appreciate the clarity, but there's still a lot.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for clarifying.
And respectfully, that's, again, if we see an increase in our overall reimbursement rates and that's the determination, then I have no doubt that Ms. Castles might come back and ask to expand that department to, again, because all those dollars would benefit us directly and be reinvested back in that department to best suit the needs of our students and families. So, it's a great question and one that if we can bring in additional revenue, absolutely will offset the cost and add staff to help support that.
Yes, ma'am. And could I ask one more thing? As part of the change, the reason why we're looking into going with a different company is because of the inaccurate reports that have been brought to our attention by Ms. Maya.
Can you, you probably can't give an answer today, but maybe can you give us a percentage of the inaccuracy? Is it a, a high percentage? Is it a?
So, when we say inaccuracy, it's just been difficult to get the reports in a timely manner and then when we do get them, they don't align with the information that's being given to us by our providers. So, so I don't, I can't tell you, you're right, I can't tell you an actual percent of inaccuracies, but it's been inconsistent and difficult to track the data and Civic Solutions is a reputable company that, that provides on-demand reports that are accurate.
And I don't know if you can answer this and Superintendent Hyde might be able to answer this. How long have we been doing business with, with the Public Associates Group?
The Public Consulting Group? I'm not sure how long.
Well, I don't need it today. Whenever you.
Yes, ma'am.
You can give it to me with all the information, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castles. There's no further questions?
Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Castles, come back. I just want to make sure that I have your two back-to-back items.
Oh, yes, sir.
You have Public Consulting Group, Inc., Learning Support Medicaid on here as well.
Yes, sir. I put it together. So, Civic Solutions is a new company that we would like to create a contract if approved and then Public Consulting Group is the company that we would.
Release.
They would re-release, yes.
Okay, perfect. So, that was an error on the attachment then? Okay, thank you. At this time, Carrie Barkin, please come forward, Director of Preschool Programs. She's here to present on Early Learning Coalition of Polk County and our agreement for voluntary pre-kindergarten preschool programs.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Hyde and board. The VPK contract is in, for approval, which is the contract we do with the Early Learning Coalition to provide our VPK services at our 60 to provide our V P K services at our 65 locations, which includes the straight V P K-funded sites, the Head Start and the Title I Pre-K, um, sites. That provides three hours of instruction, and the E L C reimburses us per child of the $2,864. So the, um, contract lists each location, uh, and we need approval to be a V P K provider and sign for Superintendent Hyde to initiate the contract with the Early Learning Coalition.
Dr. Allen?
Thank you for sharing. I just have one, uh, question, just going back to the 2021 contract. I noticed that the number of participants was approximately, uh, 1,065. This contract states 1,670, I believe, a little over 1,600 students?
Yes.
So did we add, um, some sites or seats within the contract?
We did increase our footprint at the South Point and a couple of other new locations. We serve, are anticipating serving 600 straight V P K in the V P K classrooms. 400 of those seats are in Title I Pre-K. And we estimate Head Start at 670 because the three-year-olds are not eligible. And V P K is optional if you're in the, um, Head Start program. But we explain to the parent the services and the additional supports they get by, um, using their V P K certificate with us. That also estimates, um, 24 students with the summer V P K. And the summer V P K was a challenge for us this year with competing with the kindergarten readiness camps because that has been so successful. Um, and we are offering summer V P K at Kathleen, um, and that enrollment is predicted each summer at about 24 students.
That's great. Love to see the expansion. Um, high need, and we recognize the importance of early learning. So, very commendable. Thank you.
Ms. Barkin, just so I can clarify for future planning, is the, is the issue with the kindergarten readiness camp, you know, conflicting with Pre-K that we're hosting them at different sites, or should, so in the future, should we be unifying those onto one site so it's easier for families?
They have to use their V P K, uh, V P K, they cannot have used their V P K summer, their, their V P K certificate with us during the school year at a private provider. Anybody going to kindergarten was able to utilize that. So a lot of them, even if they had not used their V P K, they had a third-grade sibling going to that school. So it's, it's a, could be a conflict. However, it's been hard to fill each summer.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. I'm sorry. I want to make sure that we weren't creating.
No, no, it's expanded the opportunity to make it easier for more children because most of them do use their V P K certificate in a school year program because it's a longer program instead of, the summer program's 300 hours and it's, you know, in the summer, so it's a very long day.
Perfect. Thank you. Barkin, there were no further questions on that item, but I noticed you have the next item up before us, Head Start Disabilities Waiver Request?
Yes. Um, each year as part of the Head Start program, um, Head Start requires us to serve 10% of our 942 funded enrollment to be children that have been identified as having a disability and on an I E P for any, any reason. Usually, uh, the 10%, um, we wrote for a waiver back with COVID, had trouble identifying. This year, um, the numbers came up a little short. We are at 8.7, which is 82 of our 942 children had been identified. We are streamlining things that we're doing within our own program as I've been up here, Dr. Allen and I have been up here. Dr. Lori Allen and I have been up here. Yeah. Um, explaining how we're restructuring, we're, um, we've already, uh, increased the teams working closely with Ms. Castles and Ms. Peters to, um, have an additional teams to help evaluate and get children through the, being identified and evaluation quicker. We've added a second student support manager, um, with Pre-K with Head Start, which is Courtney Bridges. So she's helping, um, to identify and support that. We're reorganizing our classrooms to be more inclusive. As we spoke about it a couple of board meetings ago, the class size will be 16, and we're reserving the two spots. So as children are identified, they're able to go straight into a Head Start classroom or V P K or Title I. So that increases 160 slots program-wide for students with an I E P. So those are some of the strategies that we're taking to address the falling a little bit short this school year. We have to, we only have to finish it when the school year ends, obviously. So we do have, and it's in the letter there, um, 80, uh, students who are outstanding, six are ready to staff, which will, those will get staffed right at the beginning of the school year next year, so they have the paperwork in place. They just did not have the I E P meeting in time to count for this year's 10%.
Ms. Miller?
Just want to say that I think, um, even though you didn't make the 10%, it's increased dramatically, um, under your leadership. I had a parent that had questions about it, and Dr. Lori Allen was quick to, um, answer questions and be welcoming. Um, I think they had, they were going to look at Carlton Palmer's placement. They had a meeting. That parent experience is much different than what I've heard from previous years. So I think we are making gains to identify and be inclusive of students. And, um, I'm sure you'll hit that 10% or go above with what you're, what you're planning. I also, talking to Pre-K teachers, I think they, um, I know one specifically, the fact that you're going to hold those two spots so students can be added, or if they're in the class and identified, you, they'll be able to provide more support. It's very challenging when you get Pre-K if you have parents who've not identified.
Yes.
Have not been identified yet, and the teacher sees it day one. Um, but sometimes it takes a little time for that to, um, develop, and you want to make sure they have room for support. So I appreciate the work that's going on in your department. Since I've been on the board, I think it's increased, uh, supporting families, at least with the unique abilities, um, greatly. So thank you very much.
And our one application has helped with that. The one online application has helped because they're getting a personal phone call, and we're able to ask questions and have, um, a more supportive approach from the get-go. So if the parent identifies something when they apply, we go ahead and reach out to the, um, E S D department, start with child fine and fiddlers, and start the process to go ahead and get them evaluated before they've even started school.
There are no further questions, Ms. Barkin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two items. Ms. Dodge? First one up before the board are policy updates.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Are you going to do this together? I'm not sure this is set up for short people. We'll work on that. Um, the first item is, as Superintendent Hyde indicated, is policy updates. And there are four policies for you, um, that are both Neola and staff recommended. The first is a board bylaw that basically allows when we bring onboard new, um, school board members to provide, um, the documentation to them, not only in a notebook, but electronically, and outlines, um, some additional items that, um, would be provided to a new school board member. The next, um, one is Policy 5121 on Controlled Open Enrollment that is modified to, um, to match the new state statute regarding updating, um, our Controlled Open Enrollment availability every 12 weeks and doing it on a grade-by-grade, um, level. The next item is 7520, which is naming of school facilities, commemorations and memorials that I know Superintendent Hyde has brought to you a couple of times already. What we've done here is taken his recommendations for you, actually placed them into the policy. Our current policy is a new and separate, um, section. And the only thing that I think would be different than, from what you have previously seen in your reviews of this policy are that we have updated the fee structure to include a couple of, um, new items regarding, um, sections of a, um, student seating sections. At that, on the table, on page four out of five, very last, um, line item on that table has been updated with some figures. And then under the, um, naming rights, you had previously discussed. I believe, um, Mr. Sharpless had talked about whether we wanted to have sponsors that were involved with weapons and that type of a sponsor. And so what I did was modify the language to just prohibit firearms instead of all weapons in order to kind of accommodate some of our programs that might be involved, archery and those types of things that might benefit from a sponsor, but still be cognizant of, um, that we are a school system. And then the final, um, the final policy update is an update to our policy on homeless students. And that, um, is updated to include some language that has been required by the Department of Education. So they have changed regulations and then also a couple of, of just statute changes that were required to be in the policy. So are there any questions?
Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. My only one would be, and I know we had a conversation about this last time with the firearms, but does it make sense to spell out what we would disallow, or should that be based on board decision at the time? I'm just thinking if we get into, obviously, we, you know, are not going to have Budweiser come in and sponsor a, you know, an alcohol organization or things like that. Is that something that we should spell out each one of those, or that we should leave it open to?
I, I think in addition to firearms, and I'm trying to find the actual language in all the green stuff right now. But we did, and, and what we did was saying was, um, I took the language that was already there and just took out the word weapons and changed it to firearms. And so, and, and I believe it also, um, the language also states that it's anything that wouldn't fit in with the culture of the school district. So, um, it would be up to the recommendation of the superintendent and at the board's will, what kind of fits into our culture and what doesn't. But we were trying not to outlaw all weapons when we have archery programs and J-Ratsy programs and stuff like that, but still make sure that we were careful in how we did.
Ms. Fields?
Ms. Wendy, can you tell us what section that is and what page, please?
Yes, if you give me just a second here. So at the bottom of page three of five, the second paragraph on the bottom is where it talks about the district recognizes that official names of facilities are vital to their public image, and granting of naming rights must always be consistent with our vision, mission, and shared purpose. And then, um, on the following page, at the very top of that page, it says shall not be granted, and I'm moving forward things right now by touching. It says do not be committed, granted to commercial entities associated anyway with products or services related to the sale of tobacco, alcohol, illegal drugs, firearms instead of weapons, or any other products or services not appropriate for use by minors, the use of vulgar, plainly offensive, obscene. And, and so that language was, was in the previous, um, uh, iterations of this policy that you've seen before. And all we've done is changed the word, um, weapons to firearms.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodge, there's no further questions?
Thank you. And now the absolute most exciting part of your afternoon is the legislative update. So as I have previously provided to the superintendent and the school board and our executive staff, copies of bill summaries and a listing of all the bills that did pass during this, um, legislative session, a lot of them have already been, um, signed by the governor. Some of them have not, including the budget, which, you know, we're, we're hoping will be signed fairly quickly. Um, and so what, because there were so many bills passed this year, and there was a limited amount of time available at this work session, I haven't, I haven't done a, a big thorough on every single bill that passed, but I did, but this update does have, I think, the things that you're going to be interested in and have questions about. Okay? So as soon as I figure out how to advance this. Does anybody know how to do this? Oh, there we go. Intuition. So the first, I would like to go over the budget with you. Um, what you have on your screen is our, our Polk County budget as of the current fiscal year, as of the fourth calculation, which came in, out in about March. Okay? So this is where we were with students. You can see we've had a great amount of growth just since the beginning of the school year, and we're expected to have an additional 5,800 students next year. That 5,800 includes scholarship students. So the next item is unweighted F T E, and that, that's where you can see that big growth. And then weighted F T E is even more. That includes weights for, um, E S E and E S O students and other programs like CAREER that, um, bring in, um, over 1.0 for a student. And so that bumps us up to an additional 7,000 students. The base student calculation is increased by $552 just for Polk County. And then Safe Schools is increased by 1.5 million. That's a great increase to make sure that we can pay for our guardians and others who keep that our school safe. And then you'll notice on the next line that there's this new item called Educational Enrichment Allocation. That is money that was formerly, um, budgeted through the state as our supplemental academic instruction. They have modified that under, um, the new budget that the legislature has, um, proposed this year. And it becomes educational enrichment. They've kind of modified what can be paid for out of there, but you can see it's almost a $4 million increase just for Polk County. And that, that number does not include, um, money that will also come for our turnaround schools. An additional $500 per student will be deposited into that account for our turnaround schools. And then you see the next item is they've taken the money that we used to get for turnaround schools as a separate item, and they've rolled that into our base funding. And the same thing with the reading allocation. There are still requirements surrounding reading. We have to, um, provide a budget to the Department of Education every year and say, this is what we think we're going to spend on reading this year. But that money has been rolled into the base. E S E allocation, um, has increased almost $3 million. And one of the things they did was remove what they called the Group Two Cap so that we be sure, we are now getting full funding for every student at Level Four and Level Five or any weighted student outside the, um, E S E guaranteed. Um, allocation to make sure that we're fully funded for those students, no matter how many need services. Instructional materials allocation, um, has been rolled into the base, and so has the teacher supply allocation. However, that allocation still is outlined in the budget to say that we need to give teachers $300 each, um, for classroom supplies each year. On the next page of the slide, it's still the budget. And the first thing I want to point out is that little box on the left-hand side that refers to the D C D. It is probably the biggest win that we have this year, that the D C D has been essentially replaced and eliminated with what they now call the comparable wage factor, and no district receives under 1.0. Historically, we have, you can see there, last year we were at .9704. So even though the state always spent all this time and effort on, um, providing a base, a high base student allocation, we never got the whole thing because our D C D immediately brought us down as to how much we were bringing in per student. And now with the increased wage factor, we actually receive the full base student allocation for every student that we have in the district. So the class size reduction is on the first line up there, and you can see that's the only, um, allocation that is a decrease in the amount of money that we receive. And that's a reflection of the fact that almost every school, uh, it's a reflection of the fact of the new school choice policies that the state has that we're going to be going over in a minute. And the fact that almost every school has programs that allow us to measure class size at, at the school-wide average and not on a class-by-class basis. Unweighted F T E, you see we're going to be receiving eight, over $8,400, which is an increase of $400 per student. Total local funds are, um, almost an increase of $31 million, and state funds, um, is $65 million increase over what we received in the current year. Compression, we're receiving almost $5 million additional dollars over the current year for, for, um, the, the millage compression. School recognition, as you know, depends on the number of schools that, um, qualify. The state has funded that at $200 million this year, and our, so all of our schools that qualify to receive recognition money will be funded for that. And they receive a per-student allocation. Teacher salary allocation was rolled into the overall state base, but there's language in there that says that, um, but there's language in there that says that we have to spend a certain amount of that base student allocation on teacher salaries. Our number is in that difference. Our number is 40, almost $41 million. And you'll see that's about $11 million more than we are spending in the current year. So that's new money that we will need to place on this teacher's salary schedule. However, the language is very flexible. They've taken out those, the language that made us put it in certain places or at the beginning of the salary schedule and is now at the discretion of the district, where to put that money on the salary schedule to make sure we're taking care of those compression issues for our teachers higher up on the salary schedule. Mental health allocation assistance has been increased by almost $1 million. Compression and hold harmless was always a non-recurring pot of money that we received. It was almost $7 million last year, but that money was rolled into the base. And so it's kind of nice that it becomes recurring money because it's rolled into the base. Total potential funds for Polk County are $96 million new dollars this year over the current year, based on all the changes that were made and enrolling some of these categoricals into the base and making us eligible for a full student-based allocation. But there are these new Florida empowerment scholarships. They're not new. You can see this year, as of March, we were spending 50, almost $58 million on scholarships. And the estimation for next year is that we will spend about $70 million. And so you have to take that money away from those new dollars that we're receiving to get our actual new allocation, which is more, which is $84 million. So I know there have been a lot of questions about HB1, the school choice bill. So let's just go over overwhelmingly what it does, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. It does expand eligibility for scholarships to any student in the state who is eligible to enter public school. They can go anywhere they want. They can come to us, and I think we have set up under Superintendent Hyde a system where they want to. But they can also choose to homeschool if that meets their family's needs, go to private school, or do a more personalized education where the parent directs the education, similar to homeschool, but they purchase services from either us or other vendors to complete their student's education. So the commissioner is going to develop an online portal that will be directed by the state that will allow parents to see what's available anywhere in Polk County and make their choices by seeing the performance and services available at each school through that portal. In terms of students with disabilities, the FESUA, which is the Unique Abilities Scholarship, is going to, right now, it can only increase by 1% of the total number of ESE students in the state per year. And that threshold has been raised to 3%, and it will go up 3% every year. And then for students who do not have an IEP, there's been a little bit of a struggle for students who are homeschooled or never been in a public school setting to get an IEP. And so the law now authorizes us to use plans of care and other things that are provided by licensed professionals to develop those matrix of services for students instead of actually having to have them in a traditional public school setting. Private schools have to inform a parent that their student is not entitled to special education services under IDA and discuss with the parent before they enroll any academic programs, policies, and specialized services. So there needs to be a discussion if a parent is choosing a private school for a student so that the parent understands what they're getting before they make the decision to actually enroll the student. There are also a lot of changes in HB1 that impact the district directly. We can enroll students, and we in Polk County have been doing this with homeschool students for a long time. We have always allowed them to take three courses through us. But now it's a statewide policy that a student can enroll part-time, and then the district can get funded part-time for any student that would like to join us for part of the day. It expands the timeframe for student transfer records from three days to five days. This has been a real struggle for schools to comply with such a short timeline. And so it gives them a couple extra days to get a student records to a new school. Students no longer have to take one online course to qualify for graduation. And then there's a big deregulation push in this bill. So over the summer, the Department of Education is going to be taking a look at the education code and making recommendations for when and where. They can eliminate some of the laws and regulations that are holding us back from wonderful things that we can do for students. And they're going to, the legislature is going to address them next year. We expect to fully be part of that conversation to make sure that there are plenty of opportunities for us to take things off of schools and teachers wherever possible, to make sure that students have everything they need, and we make everything as easy as possible for our schools. So as part of that, they did remove some requirements that every student has to be on a school bus to get transportation. And they have authorized the district to use other vehicles for transporting students. But we do have to notify parents, and this, in the Department of Education is directed to help us with some pooling bids and get the types of vehicles that would allow us to do some, to do some transportation more flexibly. Teacher certification changes are included in this bill, including the waiver of mastery of knowledge. If a, if a teacher has been rated effective or highly effective for the last three years, that requirement goes away. There's also some other flexibility in there on this slide. I'm trying not to, the most important of which is that it extends the temporary education certificate for everybody an automatic two years, and that was effective upon becoming law, which was last month. So anyone who is at the end of their three years on their temporary cert automatically got an extra two years to get through those requirements. There are some funding changes in this bill, and there are also funding changes in another bill that's coming up. So this isn't all of it. But it allows salaries and benefits for people whose job duty support activities funded by the 1.5 millage to be paid for with those funds. Unfinished construction projects that were started before July of next year are exempt from the total cost per student station requirements. And the DOE has to report all students who are receiving scholarships and funded in the FEFP to school districts so that we know what to expect in terms of our funding. And then the SFOs, who are handling the school choice program, are not allowed to onboard or onboard students after February, one that would be expected to be paid for. And again, that's so that there's not a constant hit on school district budgets. So that's just the end of HB1. Before I move on, are there any questions? Or I know that it was a really big bill, and I didn't go over everything in it, but I did want to make sure that we hit on a lot of different areas. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has about school choice.
Mr. Sharpless?
Hello, Ms. Dodge.
Hi.
This isn't, I've got a few different things, but this isn't necessarily just on HB1. First, just want to say thank you. I want you to know your work does not go unrecognized. And, you know, when I went to Tallahassee this time and the compliments I got around the state about the hard work that you put in for our district. So I want you to know publicly, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No ugly crying till the end.
Okay, well, sorry, I'm making you cry. I just want to say thank you publicly.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think the biggest win so far that you've talked about is $84 million increase in funding. You know, I mentioned before the DCD, I wasn't a big fan of that. I felt like it was not beneficial for Polk County, and the fact that it's being exchanged with that comparable wage, I think is a huge win for us.
Absolutely.
Also, I thank you for highlighting the, on HB1. There was a lot of negative press around HB1, but I want to highlight some of the good stuff that came from it. And that increasing that temp cert from three years to five years is going to be critical for some of our teachers. And so there were some good things that are coming out of Tallahassee. There's a lot of good things coming out of Tallahassee. So thank you for your hard work.
You're very welcome, it was my pleasure.
Thank you. I tell you, you're great all the time, so I don't need to add to Mr. Sharpless. I do have two questions. One, based on using the plan of care to create a matrix. Is our district, our district staff going to? For people who don't understand that, the IEP services that come in is assigned a number. At the end of that number is a, you get a total matrix score. The amount of funding you'll get through the scholarship is based on your matrix. So if you have the minimal amount, it would be around the $7,000 mark. But if you have a child with more significant needs, you could get up to $21,000 for homeschool, private school through the voucher. My question is, we've always used IEPs, and the state has always, the process was it went to the state, the state verified the student was not enrolled in our school system, and then you could ask for a matrix review, but it had to be done at the SCITE level. If we're now using plans of care for people who've never been in school, who, who will create that matrix score, the district or the state?
I'm not sure who will create the score.
Okay.
What the language does is allow, right now, the way IEPs are done is it's based on basically viewing what a student is capable of on all those metrics within each of the matrices.
Yes.
It's super complicated, but a lot of it is based on being able to see what a student is capable of and whether or not. Well, if you're a homeschool student, you know, you're not necessarily able to sit in a classroom for a couple of weeks for that to happen, for that review to happen. And so it was a struggle for some students to, and some parents to, to get a matrix review even done if they, if they had never been in that kind of a setting. So what this does is allow, if a physician has viewed or some other licensed occupational therapist or somebody who has viewed a student, they can participate in that process or, or give written plans and say, "This is what I've seen that this student can do and cannot do," so you know where to place them on the matrix. And then it will, it is my understanding, it will still have to be reviewed by the department.
Okay.
But, I mean, we do, we do all IEPs because you saw the language said,
Right.
"We can take that information to help in our process for doing the IEP." It's all still has to be reviewed by FTOE, but they're going to see this part the district saw, and this part came in from plans from these licensed individuals.
I just want to make sure I give parents, because I've had that call from home, from parents who are very young and they're not in school, and it was hard, because we can barely keep up with our own schedule of every 60 days evaluating. It was very hard to get a student who's never been in our district the proper documentation. I just don't know if that's still going to be a problem because they're going to have to be reviewing other, we're still going to have to assign the matrix score.
Right. I'm not sure that it will assist with the timeline.
Okay.
But it'll certainly assist with getting people an IEP who maybe were struggling prior to this.
And my second question is Commissioner Diaz had mentioned, you know, the whole part about that we could charge more, we could almost like fee for services. Is that something that we're going to do as a district superintendent? Or is that a statewide? Because we could be charging so many dollars for one class or one sport or one activity. Hillsborough could be charging something different. Is there, is there any structure to how we'll charge? Is it mandated by the state?
No.
No? Okay.
There are, there are no mandates or rules currently, and I don't know if they'll define any through rulemaking. But at present, there is nothing that would define what that would cost. For a fee structure, we will be bringing a fee structure before the board here in the next two months for students who take advantage of the voucher and want to basically pay fee for service. So you're absolutely correct. But for example, a class would be 1/7 of the $8,400 per pupil, because that's what it costs us basically. And that's how we calculate our FTE and staff our schools. And so athletics, there will be a base fee for all of those. There will also be a fee for any other ancillary services, speech, OT, PT, that we would basically provide support for. And then again, we would obviously offset that cost by any reimbursements that we're eligible to receive. So that fee structure will be designed. But at present, no, the state has not indicated or put any limitations or restrictions on what the fee structure may look like. There's no guidance provided at this time.
And the website that you mentioned, I think will be very useful for parents. I can go on and see what's available in Polk County. Will it include what's available in the district schools or just the private schools?
The indication from the department is that it will, but it's, it's like in the RFP process.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not.
More information to come.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that, more information to come.
Ms. Fields?
I call Ms. Wendy, Ms. Tallahassee. You're doing an amazing job for us and for our students and staff, and thank you for that. I want to especially thank you for listening to the cries of the teachers that were struggling with being certified. And being able to now, especially when they're highly effective, they can put that to bed. I had one of the teachers who called me and was crying. She was so excited. She's highly effective, yet she couldn't pass the general knowledge, whatever the reasons may be. So thank you for being that voice that we really needed at that time. I do have a question about the vouchers. I wanted to know, what is the accountability piece, if there is one, for the parents who choose to homeschool their students? And I also wanted to know if we have any idea, and this might be a Superintendent Hyde question, how many students might migrate from the school district to something different? Private schools or homeschool? And it might be too soon to know that. And if it is Superintendent Hyde, do we have an idea as to when we would really know how that's going to impact our student enrollment? So it's two questions. If she can answer the first one, then you can do the second one, please.
So as far as the accountability is concerned, there's language in there about students still provide their portfolios for homeschool students and for the personal education students. There's still nationally-normed assessments that they have to take and provide as part of their portfolio. And then that, that data is still provided to a state university who analyzes it on a statewide basis and says these are, you know, what the trends are in terms of education. In terms of, we do have numbers that were in the runs that our, our finance folks have. The number that I gave you in the budget was based on that 12, that $69.8 million overall. That's based on the number of K to, pre-K to third graders, they think, in Polk County. There are different allocations for the, for the scholarships for each grade level. And so those are based on the estimates that they've, that they have for Polk, that just Polk County, and that's how it ends up being, an additional 12 million. There's also language in all of these bills that says that, that, that we keep doing the counts like we've been doing. You know how there's an October count, and there's a February count? And after every count, there's going to be a recalculation so that we know how many scholarship students actually did come in, how many are actually our student. And so we can keep adjusting our figures based on those recalculations throughout the year.
So if I could clarify one part to what Ms. Dodge just shared, though. And I'll, actually, I'll come back to that. But to your question, Ms. Fields, and the board had asked this question previously, how many, the vouchers will have a double impact on us. Number one, students who are currently already participating in private schools can now secure a voucher. So there's that number. The number we are tracking, more specifically, are the available number of seats still available within the current infrastructure here in Polk County. That's less than 4,000. So we anticipate that even if we grew by 5,000 to 7,000 students, the maximum we would see leave Polk County based off, again, the availability of current seats is 4,000. I don't anticipate seeing that number. But going back to the accountability, to Ms. Dodge's point, there are requirements on behalf of families who decide to homeschool their students. There is no accountability. I want to be very clear. If the student doesn't grow that year, doesn't meet grade level expectations, the parent isn't penalized in any way. So as a school district, we are developing policies and expectations and a contract that we will issue to families that basically will put some accountability in place that over a specified period of time, we expect a student to demonstrate an acceptable amount of growth as we would with anyone else. Because without that, you will have people, it's a very small percentage, who will take advantage of the voucher, and nothing will happen for that child for one, two, or possibly even for three years. And then what will happen is they'll come back to the public school system, and then we will get graded and evaluated based off their poor graduation rate, poor performance, and those types of things. So there's, there's accountability as far as procedurally what families need to do, but there is no real accountability like, that's placed like on our doorstep as far as performance indicators. So it's a mixed message we send there. But I'll continue to track because that 4,000 number is inflated. It's an estimate because private schools are not required to report to the Department of Education their number of available seats. They don't have a FISH requirement, basically, that we can track and monitor as effectively. So we've been working by basically calling each school and asking, "What's your enrollment? What's your enrollment cap?" And for those who've been willing to share, we've been trying to calculate that number. But we'll have a very good idea at the start of the school year as to how many students, to Ms. Dodge's point, have applied for that voucher and have. to Ms. Dodge's point, have applied for that voucher and have successfully taken it. And we'll have to differentiate between those that are already in the system, outside of the public school system, and those who are taking advantage of it as a new process. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, and I didn't think there was accountability piece, but I wanted to make sure that, that I wasn't knowledgeable. So thank you for that. And thank you, Ms. Wendy.
Sure. And if I could just add, I would like to, as we look forward to our next legislative platform, I think kind of that accountability piece is something that we should consider for, for the upcoming legislative session, and also the piece about what happens when a student who has been outside our system and is very behind comes into our system. And, and we can, you know, we're, we're going to do, they're all our kids if they're in Polk County, right? So we're going to do everything we can for that student. But what we don't want is for the schools to be negatively impacted for something that is outside of their control. So we think there needs to be some common sense factors that are put into the system to make sure that we have an appropriate amount of time to catch up a student who might not have been receiving the same quality that they're, that they're going to receive when they come back to Polk County schools.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, and just following up on that, I mean, we already faced that now. If a student comes to us from a different district, or maneuvers from a different school, I mean, there's, there's still those variables that are in place coming into our district from another state as well. So, yeah, definitely agree from an accountability standpoint. I want to go back to the contracted services conversation, because I think the flip on that, I would love to know, Superintendent, how many part-time students we currently serve within the district? Because within that bill, right, it is, if a student decides not, because not all homeschoolers are, you know, they're not, they're not going to choose to take the voucher, and there's a lot to that conversation. But, like, how many are we currently serving? Because if we're serving a part-time student, they choose not to take the voucher, we now can claim a full-time equivalent, right? Is what the bill reads.
I'm not sure what you mean, if they're only part-time?
Well, yeah, so, and when we have a part-time student, we actually get to claim that based on the language in HB 1, we get to claim that student as a full-time equivalent.
He's referencing homeschool students who are currently not accepting a voucher, but if they come back and choose to take one or two classes on a campus, we basically continue to collect the FTE for that student in its entirety.
So there is no FTE in its entirety? So what it is, is when we, when we claim a student, they were in Mrs. so-and-so's class here, and Mr. so-and-so's class here, and it's actually a portion of an FTE.
Correct.
So, so we collect FTE, but not, not a full 1.0 FTE. And, and as I mentioned, we in Polk County have always been serving homeschool students up to three courses per semester, I believe, is the, is the, is what we've been doing. So we've been, we've been claiming that FTE along, all along, if a student had certain courses they wanted to take from us.
Yeah, it seemed like the language said that we were getting additional dollars for that part-time student. I'll share the language with you.
There are some tutoring and other opportunities outside of the school day that the bill allows us to do, and so if a student wanted to take three courses from us and homeschool in the afternoon, and then purchase some tutoring services from us, there are, there are lots of ways for us to earn additional funding for a student.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I, I think it's the FTE portion that I'm getting, maybe unnecessarily hung up on.
And that question was brought up at the FSBA in the session where State Representative Tuck, who sponsored the bill, was present, and in regards to the portal, will the district, you know, school districts have an opportunity to be present on that portal as well? And that was answered in an affirmative. Because I, I think there's an opportunity. I, to me, the opportunity is, we've got some great programs that I think there's an appetite for within our area, and, you know, thinking about, yes, the contracted services as well, but I think the part-time option. So I, I don't know how many students we currently serve part-time, but I, I think there's an opportunity, if we can see it differently in some way.
I can ask Ms. Everett to run those numbers, how many individual students take one, two, or three classes with us.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
I just have two things. One, I'll speak to the accountability of homeschoolers, because I have one. I fill out a paper once a year, and I tell them what grade my son is in. His portfolio is reviewed by a certified teacher. She marks that she reviewed it. That's it. And that he met expectations that I had set for him, because it's about the parent choice, which the issue we'll have with that is, there's no parameters to what's reviewed, or there's no parameters of any of, and I'm talking, my son, obviously, is cognitively disabled, but even of typical students. I asked, what grade should I put down? And he's, you know, we're moving up. What grade, what grade do you, have you discovered that he's at yet? And that's very difficult. And, and that's been a long conversation of, it's a balance of how much do you put on as accountability fact, as an accountability factor to people who are choosing their own curriculum and choose, so. It is a gray area, and it'll be interesting to see what the data shows us, but there isn't really much in, as far, as far as accountability. We have, most of our private schools have a lot, except for the very large, I would say the large private schools, but most of the small private schools in Polk County are funded a lot by the vouchers already, so I don't see that they're going to pull. I will tell you that the larger private schools are already marketing the voucher to the students that are there and have been there since pre-K that we don't have numbers on, but I don't think it's going to be a huge impact, because, like, we've seen, some of the other private schools are so heavily funded already by the vouchers that they're already accounted for. My question is, in HB 1, there was, there was an accountability factor in if schools take so much money in vouchers. Can you talk about that piece? I think it was 250,000. If they were accepting that, you know, which some of them will be automatically, but what will that change for private schools in, in recording pieces?
So I think that the rule, I think that the statute used to say you didn't really have any accountability until at least 50%, and I think they've lowered that to a lower threshold so that there's more involvement in what's going on in those schools as they bring in more and more students on scholarships.
And I think that's a good, that's a good piece, only because that was our fear, that schools were 80% voucher, 100% voucher, and there was zero accountability for that. So I'm hoping that helps the districts and the students that will return back to us. Thank you.
Sure.
No further questions, Ms. Dodge?
Okay, so now I'm going to move on to HB 5101, which is where all the funding, fund funding changes that I talked about in the budget are located. So this is where they renamed the DCD to the CWF, and say, you can be above one, but you can't be below. Another great thing that happened was the, they put language in there, and they actually did this in another bill that says that the, the career cost factor has to be greater than basic funding for our students in 9 to 12 who are taking career courses. So that's, we have so many career courses in Polk County, that's going to benefit us also. And then it repeals that Group 2 enrollment cap, and it also makes some changes to ESE so that you can't have any, less funding for your ESE guaranteed allocation than you have in your current year. So either, you either get more funding based on a growth in the next year in ESE students, or you're capped at your current year funding so that you can't lose money in that program. That, this is also where they put the language that says that the education, the new educational enrichment allocation is a baseline. You can't ever get anything less than you have right now. They must add workload to it every year, and that's where that language about getting $500 per student for your turnaround schools will be added to that allocation in addition to what you saw on the budget table. And that's for anyone in turnaround, in district-managed turnaround, or within two years of exiting turnaround, to support those programs. The TSA, TSIA becomes the classroom teacher and other instructional personnel salary increase allocation, which, I don't know, good luck getting an acronym for that, but that's, this is the language where they provide us with flexibilities to make sure that anyone who's instructional personnel can benefit from those new funds, and that it's not just going to the bottom of the salary schedule. So, let's make sure I didn't go too far. I didn't, okay. So there's language in there that allows you to transfer from, you, the board, to transfer from any categorical program to an appropriate account if it's necessary and the, the department approves it. So if you're, if you were doing some sort of instructional materials adoption or some things, because they've rolled so many things into the base, it allows you to transfer money around if, if it's needed on a specific item. The teacher, this is where they establish the teacher classroom supply will be specified in the, in the budget every year, and this year it's $300. There's also some, this is where they put the language about the comprehensive reading plan. The plan has to be approved by the board, and we have to submit the budget for the individual components to DOE, and there are timelines established. There's also language in there about our mental health plans, what needs to be included in those, and how the funding will be divided up between providers and what we provide at the district level. This bill also has language about library media centers to make sure that our classroom libraries are included in that, and that the board is approving our staff development plan that supports our instructional materials program, and that a budget for that is submitted to the department. As by July 1, the budget hasn't even signed, so that, that's something that would start in the following year. The instructional materials allocation is eliminated. Language about if any of our reading materials that are identified by the Just Read Florida office that we use don't have to go through that public review and comment process that's required in statute. It creates a Heroes in the Classroom bonus program, and so that's $4,000 this year is what the bonus is, and that will be in the budget every year, how much it is for retired first responders and veterans who want to become teachers, and then if they teach in a critical shortage area, there's an additional bonus. And then school boards can adopt salary incentive or other strategies to compensate teachers that are DNF, are turnaround schools, and it removes the requirement to do MOUs and, and move people, and to have to collectively bargain those movements to support our turnaround schools. And then this is the language that allows us to assess fees for summer school, and they have to be based on the student's ability to pay, and outlined in policy. Let's see, there are going to be bonuses for incentives to get people into the early learning career pathway, who are already in an early learning setting. And then, among other things, this bill establishes the Florida School for Competitive Academics, which is a new school that they funded in the budget that will be located in Alachua County, and it can begin admitting students in two years. So those are all, that, that's the actual bill that has all of those funding changes that I talked about in the budget. SB 7024 is the retirement bill. This is very exciting for many of, many of us who are worried about recruitment and retention of employees, and especially teachers. It allows for entry into drop at any time, instead of that one-year window after you're eligible for retirement. It extends drop for everybody from five years to eight years. Like, classroom teachers already have eight years, so it extends it for them from eight years to 10 years. And it, that portion for the teachers will be repealed in 2029, so get all the teachers you can before 2029. And then there's, if you're an elected class who already was in drop, you can't have that same extension. I don't think anybody hears in drop, but, you know, just in case. They've changed some interest rates, and they've also increased the health insurance subsidy for our retirees, so that goes from $5 to $7.50 per month. It's capped at $2.25 a month instead of $150 a month, which is what our retirees have been receiving. And the minimum that a retiree would, would receive is raised to $45, and we will be paying 2% of every employee's gross compensation to cover that increase. And then also allocations to the investment plan accounts are going to be 2% for each membership class. So those are, I think, the drop, the drop portions of this bill, which was signed on June 5th, were, were effective upon becoming law. So anyone who was worried about having to leave the district on June 30th because their drop was up has that opportunity for those additional three years, and for the teachers an additional two years after eight. SB 256 is employee organizations, we're about representing public employees. I put this on here because it's been quite a discussion. There are three areas of the bill. Some are effective July 1, some October, and some immediately. The July 1 is the part that prohibits dues from being deducted to pay for union dues from a, from someone's salary, and I think that PEA has done a really good job about already piloting other ways to get to collect union dues for their members. There are membership authorization forms that are going to be prescribed by PERC, and it has to have very specific information included on that form. Members can revoke their membership at any time, and if we, if a union requires a form, it can't ask for a reason why they're revoking their membership, and then they have to keep all those forms so that they can be inspected by PERC. Effective October 1 is when the language hits about having to have 60% of your eligible members as members, or if you don't, you have a certain timeline to recertify. The recertification process has not changed. So while you have to have 60% of your members to, to automatically recertify, you only have to have 50% of those voting to get recertified. So it's a, it's a, it's an additional administrative hump that they will have to go through if they don't meet those thresholds, but that doesn't mean they won't, they don't just disappear. And so there's also some provisions about when somebody can challenge an application, and then there's going to be, the public employee unions have to provide audited financials to their members, and a little bit more fiscal information to them. SB 240 is the Career and Technical Education Bill. I've already gone over some of the things, like the funding portions that are in that bill. This bill concentrates a lot on what you'll see is WBL on the screen, which is work-based learning. It, it provides more work-based learning opportunities for students. The, you see the first bullet, if, or the first bullet, if a student's in a CTE course or a certification course, and they want to keep going on in that program, we have to afford them that opportunity if it's available somewhere in the district. Parental notification to parents of the beginning of the year is expanded to include all of our CTE pathways, work, work-based learning opportunities, and specifically contact information for a school guidance counselor, who can help a family decide what's the best pathway for their student. It adds CTE in the high school diploma requirements. Right now, there's that item about you have to have fine arts, debate and speech, or practical arts, and they add CTE courses to the courses that can, can be used to satisfy that requirement. And they change the merit diploma designation to the industry scholar designation. Our career centers are now authorized to offer associates in science and associates in applied science degrees. There's going to be an approval process through the State Board of Education, but that's a pretty big change and an opportunity. There's going to be an additional wait for students who, that the district would receive for getting these students through dual enrollment career courses. And then they change the qualifications for being a career education teacher so that you only have to have three years of experience, occupational experience instead of six, so that will help us get some more instructors into some of these programs. And the same with the, we, we can now, as a district, issue that adjunct teaching certificate to anyone who has industry certification in a specific subject area, so that will also help us. There's also $100 million in funding in this bill to allow us to start programs in career education. So I think that's pretty exciting, and I know that we have lots of things that have been hanging out there that we've been wanting to do, but, but there hasn't necessarily been funding available, so hopefully this is something we can utilize. So HB 1259 is the Charter Capital Outlay Bill. This also received a lot of attention this year. The charter schools now, under this bill, are eligible to receive not only the state capital outlay, which is about $230 million per year, that they receive on a per-student basis, but also a portion of our 1.5 mils. It's a graduated implementation schedule, so next year they would receive 20%, and then in '27, '28, they would be eligible for 100% of their per-student allocation. And the bill outlines how And the bill outlines how that's calculated. It's calculated based on the COFTI of the entire district and, um, then a per student allocation for the entire district is calculated and we give the charter schools based on the number of students that they have. They have to attest in writing that they're, um, if they go away as a charter school, that all of the, um, everything they purchase with these funds would revert back to the public and they're not eligible if a member of their governing board or their family has an interest, um, in the lease. A lot of charter schools lease their properties, they don't own them and so that's just an accountability provision that they've put in there. HB 1069 is, um, regarding instructional materials, which like other things gets addressed every year lately, and also pronouns. So the instructional material requirements says that DOE is going to approve all instructional materials used to, used to teach health now. It defines sex for the purposes of the education code. And then it exhibits, um, it takes that prohibition from last year's parental rights bill and extends it through eighth grade in terms of teaching sexual orientation or gender identity. The pronouns portion of this bill basically states that, um, no one, we can't require an employee, anyone contracting with our schools or a student to offer pronouns, use pronouns, um, in any way. They, people can still offer whatever they like, we just can't require them to be used as the school district. And then, um, we cannot, you know, there's language in there about we can't have any penalties for not, for someone who doesn't want to use somebody's pronouns that they have offered. Did I? And then the instructional materials portion, um, the elementary schools right now have to put all the books in their library online for parents to review and they've added classroom libraries to that requirement so that those books will appear online also. Um, there, uh, if an objection to a book in a library or classroom library is based on it being pornographic or harmful to minors, it has to be removed within five days and it can't, and it can't, um, be available to anyone at the school until the review process has been, the objection has been addressed and the review process has been completed. If it's determined by the board to be objectional, then it has to be discontinued at all schools. The DOE is going to develop a form, right now we use our own form and so they're going to have a statewide form and then principals are going to have to communicate all these processes to parents. And these committees are going to have to be open, basically using the Sunshine statutes as they're reviewing these books. And they have to have parents in the public and it has to be parents of students who will have access to the materials that are on these committees. HB 7039 is student outcomes also. I don't know what happened there. It's the same slide, so we're going to skip over that because somehow my student, but this, um, the student outcomes, uh, bill, even though I don't have the right bullets on here, the student outcomes bill is all about, um, adding discalcula, um, to some of the requirements, um, for students to receive extra services. Right now if they have dyslexia or if they, um, dis-
Scrapia.
What'd she say?
Scrapia.
Okay, well, if they have, if they display anything that makes it somebody think that they might have these, um, learning disabilities, then there are extra supports that have to be put in place and they have to be put in place early, even as early as pre-K and, um, and the, and the materials, it talks about the materials that have to be provided and, and basically just the additional, both the reading supports and math supports as well. So sorry, that's, that, um, slide didn't come up, I don't know what happened. It's like, my secretary is awful and I know because I'm her. So education, these are just a couple of education bills that I wanted to just go over real briefly because people have asked about them. Technology in public schools, we have to limit access to only age-appropriate subject matters and materials. We have to be very specific about, um, protecting the safety and security of students and their personal information. We cannot let them use our wireless, our, at any of our schools to access social media platforms unless it's expressly directed by the teacher and TikTok or anything that TikTok becomes is completely banned. Students, adults, can't be happening on a school campus. So teachers can now designate areas for wireless devices during instructional time, um, if they would like to do that and just say, everybody take your cell phone, put it here and I'll let you know when it's time to get it out. And then students in grades six to 12, I have to have instruction on social, emotional and physical effects of social media and the code of conduct has to have all that language in it. Middle and high school start times does not apply until July 1, '26, '27, so we have three years to get this together. At that time, um, middle schools wouldn't be able to begin before eight and high schools before 8:30. Uh, we have to have input from stakeholders in the community to discuss the impacts. Um, and we also have to talk to the, our community about the impacts of steep sleep deprivation on students. And then, um, we have to, um, discuss with our community strategies for implementing the later start times and there's $5 million in funding provided in the budget to kind of plan for this over the next three years. HB 1121 is the Florida Retirement System. Basically this allows anyone that one-year timeframe after you've retired, right now you're prohibited from volunteering and a retired teacher couldn't come back and read in their classroom and this bill takes care of that. So it defines what volunteerism is and once you've retired from the system, anybody, um, it doesn't just impact teachers. If you retire from a legislative office, you can go back and read in a classroom. Anyone who are retiree of FRS can now come back and volunteer during that one first year after retirement. Prohibited apps on government devices, the DMS, Department of Management Services has to create a list. And then we as a public education institution have to block access to any of these, um, apps that they say are on this list. We have to restrict it and we have to have a way to, um, wipe it from any devices that we as a district provider own. Taxation is a really long bill, but as you can see, it's a really short slide. All, there are going to be two back-to-school holidays this year. One is July 24th through August 6th, which is right before school starts and the other one is January 1 to January 14th, which is basically the beginning of second semester. So two opportunities for families to get a tax break on, um, items that their students use for school. It defines what's in it. And then that puts a permanent sales tax exemption on, um, baby and toddler products and oral hygiene products. K-12 Teachers is all about, um, it creates a teacher's bill of rights, allows teachers to, um, direct what's going on, gives them, it, it takes all of the statutes regarding teachers' rights, um, over their classroom and puts it in one area of the statute. The commissioner is directed to try to get as, rid of as many state or district rules or laws that, um, are too much for teachers and bring those to the legislature next year. And then there's specifically language about when a teacher sends a student to the principal's office for behavioral reasons. First, the principal has to decide if it's a violation of the code of conduct. If it's not, nothing can happen. If it is and the principal doesn't, um, use the, whatever recommendation the teacher sent the child with, in terms of discipline, they have to put something in writing to tell the teacher why. Either they did more or they did less. And then it creates a dual enrollment scholarship program and a teacher apprentice program for, as more, um, teacher recruitment opportunities that the state will fund to try to get teachers into the profession. So I'm over by seven minutes, but-
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Mr. Sharpless?
I just wanted to go back to HB 5101 and I just wanted to take a second. It's not a question, it's just a comment. I just wanted to thank Representative Josie Tomco for, I mean, part of our poke delegation is what really was the, um, you know, the driving force behind this. So I wanted to publicly thank her and all the rest of our delegation for helping us get that extra funding. I think it's important.
Absolutely. She did a yeoman's job.
Ms. Miller?
Can you just go back real quick for the public and talk about, we hear a lot about the teachers' union, but we don't really hear a lot about ASME, who are painters, our electricians, our food service workers, our bus drivers, who, who do not have the same participation level in their organized union group. This will all apply to them as well, is what I understand.
That's correct. It will apply to them, but so will the recertification process. So if they're not at 60%, or, you know, right now the law is 50%. Um, if, if, if they're not at 60%, then they would have a timeframe where they could go back, they would, um, vote. People who are interested in participating in ASME would vote and as long as 50% of those people want to keep ASME as their, not 50% of everybody who can be part of ASME, but 50% of the people who decide to go on and vote as to whether ASME should represent them or not, as long as that is 50% of them vote for ASME, then they are retained as their representative.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Chair Wyatt?
Thank you. Ms. Dodge, see now we're at the end and you can make her cry if you want to. But I just want to say thank you for all that you do in Tallahassee. I'm a little sad that this is our last meeting with you officially on our, our team, um, but I know you're not changing your phone number and are still gonna, gonna hang out with us. Um, but just for, I mean, it was a heavy education year, I think to say the least and you really tackled a lot of our, our priorities in that. I also want to give a shout out real quick to Senator Burton, who I know if you were at the Winter Haven Chamber wrap-up, she was very passionate still about, um, how difficult it was to get the Florida Retirement System bill through and she really stuck her, her neck out quite a bit on that one and went to bat for us, so a, a huge shout out to her. But really for all that you've done over the past 20-plus years, um, and with the district, we're appreciative of you. I'm glad that you're still going to show us around Tallahassee next year, um, but we appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you. I've loved doing it and I'm glad I still get to do it, so.
There are no further questions or comments, Ms. Dodge?
So can I just add a comment here?
Absolutely.
First of all, this very last slide is every other bill that I didn't get a chance to go over, so I hope that you'll take a look at those things and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out me, out to me. And then I just wanted to say it's been absolute pleasure to work for all of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge. Now that half the room is depressed. Good luck, Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren has several items. Mr. Pitts unfortunately is under the weather and not able to join us today, um, but Mr. Warren is here, um, so Mr. Warren, I'll turn it over. The very first item is the Para-Parent Involvement Job Description.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I want to quickly go through some of the changes that come under the Budget and Staffing section. Specifically, the first item is a change that you'll see a financial impact sheet there with no cost incurred with this piece. Uh, this is a position, uh, job description where we have changed the job description title, uh, so it will now be a Para-educator Parent-Family Enga-, uh, Parent-Family Engagement position. Uh, you can see through the, uh, strike-through changes that the position is going to now exist to perform responsible work in assisting parent-family engagement, uh, kind of changing, making sure that it's functioning specifically in that part. The essential functions of the job are reflective of that. It outlines, uh, who the position is going to assist, what functions specific at the school site, um, the position will engage in. I also think it's noteworthy in the non-essential functions of the job that it's very specific that, uh, the position is not for clerical use, um, or for translating, uh, so they're trying to really focus on the parent engagement function of this position. Um, they do have a preferential experience component of Title I and so with that being said, it's a no-cost impact, it's a revision to a job description for Para-educator Family Engagement.
Mr. Warren, or correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe PEA's already reviewed this?
That is correct.
Any concerns there?
There were none. I reached out to her, uh, day before yesterday and got an email correspondence that she was good to go.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sharpless?
Um, I just, uh, this isn't a question about this, this specific one, but just a, a question I have in general. When we get these different changes, can we please, I have two things I would like to see. How are we benchmarking this or comparing this, uh, with other school districts and salaries and, and positions? And then also, how do these positions align with our strategic plan? So if I could get that information, just again, isn't for this specific one, but just in future when we get, uh, you know, changes, I would, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
No further questions, Mr. Warren?
Thank you. We will now, uh, proceed to the second item, which is a, uh, staffing update for Fine Arts. And again, if you open your attachments that you have there on your screens, you'll find that in the financial impact of this position, um, you, we are unfunding a TRST District Coach Fine Arts.
Pause a minute. I just want to make sure the board members understand, all the attachments are there. For some reason, we're having an issue with board docs. It's operating intermittently, so please understand that's not an issue, that the attachments were not there and you have seen that anyways during your initial reviews, but, uh, unfortunately there is an issue with board docs at this time.
If, with that being said, if it's in order, I can go ahead and read some more of the details if you're not able to see them in front of you to jog your memories. Um, we're unfunding a TRST District Coach Fine Arts, which, uh, was a teacher position. Um, the, the cost of that position would have been $47.5, which would have been the, the, the teacher's salary. We're looking to fund the Senior Coordinator Music, which would be, uh, $61.245. It's a difference of costing incurred of $13,007.45. That's the difference between the teacher and the senior coordinator. Um, you, you would be able to see how the Senior Coordinator position fits within the Fine Arts Department and then there is a job description that outlines its function. It is a Senior Coordinator of Music and the various responsibilities that it specifically This, I did want to, I think it's important to also add, I did follow up with Ms. Cummings today relative to, wanted to know more details relative to the unfunding of the TRST. This is a position that's being vacated, so there is no one in this position, um, effective Thursday, actually, they're retiring.
Let me move to my paper copy, um, of the agenda. I, board members, I'll ask for a show of hands if you have questions about that last item that he just reviewed. Seeing none, Mr. Warren, you may move forward.
Yes, the next item, um, leading along would be the Staffing Updates for Professional Development. And in that particular item, if you had your attachments, you could see it would follow much like the item we just discussed. We're looking to unfund a Lead Mentor, which is a teacher position, um, at a cost of $47.5. It is a vacant position at this time. No one is in or occupying the position. I followed up with Ms. Rouse, they'd been waiting to bring this forward, um, as they're wanting to fund the Senior Coordinator position at a cost of $61.245. It's the same difference, um, as previously stated of $13,0745. This is a position that, uh, would serve specifically, uh, working with coaching and mentoring, um, new teachers and, um, providing services in the Professional Development, uh, Department under the direction of Jennifer Rouse, Senior Director.
Any questions from board members on that position? Seeing none.
The next item would be the organizational reassignment of ESE Facilitator. And with this particular item, you'll notice that we are looking to, uh, follow up on what was previously presented at the March workshop and board, and work session as we are looking to change the reporting structure and the title for the position of LEA Facilitator to, uh, ESE Facilitator. The reporting change that is being proposed would be organizational in the fact that the, the positions would change from reporting, uh, directly, having their work directed by a building principal to having their work directed by central office. It allows the opportunity to deploy resources based on student need and changes of student population. And the, uh, job description has no substantive changes, uh, relative to the function, but we do have the title change from LEA to ESE Facilitator.
Any questions from members of the board? Ms. Fields? Let me unmute you, I apologize.
Spinning.
Yes, ma'am, so is all of us. Board docs is down, unfortunately.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna try to remember from my memory, but the job description change for the ESE- But the job description change for the ESE Facilitator, was there a change where they now are required to do eligibility?
The custom job purpose here, it says the facilitator provides site-based support in all areas of ESE Ed. It utilizes program knowledge of leadership skills to collaborate with school, region, and district staff to provide support for curriculum, instruction behavior compliance, and programmatic decisions. The facilitator will assist the site-based administrative team, ESE and general ed teachers, school staff, parents, and students to ensure the provision of FAP and to improve the outcomes of students with disabilities. They schedule and conduct change of placements for students with disabilities and IEP meetings. They provide support to students with disabilities. They assist with organization and management of services to provide to the students. And they demonstrate knowledge of practices of instructional behavioral strategies. There's several others that I could continue on, but does that answer your question? Because I did see the component that they do assist with IEPs. They provide support with disabilities upon, they provide support to students with disabilities based upon site needs. Site support schedules will vary depending upon needs of students, as documented by the IEP. They schedule and conduct changes of placement for students with disabilities as well. So they would be actively engaged in that process.
Okay, because it's my understanding that that's a little bit of heartburn for some of the ESE facilitators, and this is to Superintendent Hyde, not to you, thank you, that the eligibility piece is a new piece for many of them, if they're gonna do that. I mean, that's my question. And if they are going to be required to do the eligibility piece, are they going to get training? My understanding is that it's six weeks, about six weeks of training. And what kind of support will they get if they're gonna be given their duties? I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I have heard from different people.
Ms. Castles, if you'll please come forward.
Yes, ma'am, they will be provided trainings in the current staffing. The way that it is, we have program specialists who providing eligibility staffing meetings. And in order to make sure that we streamline the support that's going to be going to the schools, we've requested back, we talked about it back in February. I think you were out that day. But we discussed having a different way of work. So the current staffing specialists, the recommendation is for them to become program specialists, which will allow another layer. Right now, we have senior managers that support 20-plus schools. And in order to support schools more effectively, we're asking for program specialists to provide additional support. We have three to four per region. That would allow for each person to have seven schools in addition to the leader, which is a senior manager. So with that being said, the person who's now the LEA, who will become ESE facilitators, will also be able to do the eligibility staffing meetings. And when this was first presented, we gave a, we actually gave a draft job description and we had conversations about this early on. But yes, ma'am, there will be a lot of trainings. That's the reason for the changes, to make sure that we can streamline a lot of the training and make sure we're consistent with the support we provide to schools.
And when will they start doing the eligibility piece?
Well, we have staff in place that can do eligibility meetings now. And so we're going to be providing the trainings. We're in the process of developing the trainings at this time. And so when they, many of them, many of our staff that are program specialists will be returning on July 20th. And then teachers will return after that. And in the meantime, we'll be developing trainings to make sure that they have the time to do that. Because if they're not in the schools, they'll be at our district office and be able to have more time during that period before students come back.
Ms. Williams, if I could clarify, I believe what Mrs. Fields is requesting is, or asking, and I'll ask it a little bit more directly. Will they be asked to do something they're not fully trained and competent in doing before they're fully trained?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that it needs to be repeated and repeated and repeated because I think that some of the facilitators are not understanding that to be the case.
Yes, ma'am. And even to that extent, there's always subsequent follow-up and check-ins and coaching and mentoring that will take place as well. So Ms. Castles will be more than happy to provide me with that comprehensive training plan and we'll bring that back before the board, so it's noticed publicly as well.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Castles. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
That would conclude the ESE Facilitator piece unless there were further questions.
I see no further questions, so that concludes Budget and Staffing?
We have one more, which would be the strike-through of the ESE Director of ESE Instruction. And I could walk the group through that. We are changing a position title from Director of ESE Curriculum Charter Schools and Private Schools to Director of ESE Instruction. The substantive changes to the job purpose establishes who the position reports to and what services they'll be providing to the various departments or elements of the ESE Department. And then it outlines with specificity functions of the job relating to the change of the position to reflect the curricular component.
Mrs. Fields?
Superintendent Hyde, is this the position with, you and I discussed with Ms. Bruno?
I believe it is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This was the initial error in the staffing. And so they brought it back to make sure that clarification was made.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That concludes Budget and Staffing.
No further questions, sir. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, the remaining items. You have the donation report, February 2023 financial analysis, March 2023 financial analysis, and this Head Start Services report. Board members, I will also provide you, at least two of you have contacted me regarding to the overall audit, status of our overall audit. We did receive an updated calendar. The auditing service had had some turnover as well as our own internal staff. And so they revised and developed a much more aggressive timeline to ensure its completion for this school year and to ensure that we've addressed and remedied any issues going into the upcoming school year. So you will receive that from me in your Friday update. Madam Chair, that concludes the workshop.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. I would love to review the agenda, however, I cannot currently pull it up. So, before we review the agenda, while hopefully this is still spinning, one of the things that we do need to talk about before our board meeting tonight is FSBA officers. So typically, all of our appointments come in December, just after school board elections happen. Those are for all of our committees and liaisons except for FSBA. They rotate on a June to, or a July to June schedule. So we will, before July 1, need to approve our, both someone for the Board of Directors and an alternate, and then also for their advocacy committee. Part of the reason that they do it in the summer is so the advocacy committee can start meeting during the summer and not get a whole new committee on January 1, right before session starts. So we want to, just want to make sure that we have our appointments to those. And I believe currently it is Dr. Allen on Board of Directors? And you're his alternate. And then for advocacy, I believe it is Ms. Miller. And am I the alternate on that one? I think I'm the alternate on that one. So if anyone is interested in serving on the Board of Directors or would like to nominate someone that's interested, I would love to hear those. I would like to nominate Justin Sharpless if he's interested for Board of Directors, but...
I am very interested.
Okay.
But Board Chair, just, I want to make sure we're in work session, so...
Correct, yes.
And if that is going to be added as a...
It is already on the agenda. We just don't have who the names are. So we typically have the conversation, just so we don't have to go down that rabbit hole at our meeting in the evening. So if Justin Sharpless is interested, then we can certainly put that forward as the nomination this evening.
Is there anyone else that's interested?
Is there anyone else that's interested? Who is not?
I mean, I think as, serving as alternate and then with Ms. Fortney moving on, moving into that role, I've enjoyed serving in that capacity and would enjoy the opportunity to serve in a full term.
Okay.
I don't know the process, but I would think that it would be only fair, everything is not fair, that Dr. Williams would be given an opportunity to do a full term and Mr. Sharpless could continue to be the backup, the alternate.
Absolutely. I'm okay with that.
Just nobody seemed to be responding is why I didn't think anybody wanted to respond. All right, so we can put forward then Dr. Allen and then Mr. Sharpless as the nominees for this evening. And then advocacy, is anyone interested in serving on advocacy?
What does that entail?
So they do, part of it is the legislative platform. They changed it a couple of years ago where not everyone serves on the state or federal legislative committee. They kind of split it up, so advocacy is really for schools in general. And then they have, they'll ask you to serve on a subcommittee for either legislative, federal, or I believe there's one other, at least. Correct me if I'm wrong, policy. So those are the three subcommittees that they kind of have broken it up. So every district has a representative. And then, once you're on the committee, they split it up for who's on which team. I know when I was, I was the state legislative. I don't know, Lisa, if you've been on...
No, I haven't been on that long. But I would, I'm, and I, right now, I'd love to find another board member who would be willing to serve for that full-time and I could go as alternate. My main, personally, my experience is in federal legislative advocacy. But I've just joined two other boards. And so if there is someone who has heart for that, I'd be very much willing for them to run that advocacy position.
When are the meetings?
Typically, they do an all-day advocacy meeting typically, depending when session is, typically either September or October. And then they also, until, they have Friday phone calls still, Friday mornings. They have Zoom calls as session, committee weeks and session starts, just with updates of where everything is. And then that week in, the big one is the Tallahassee week and would most likely be end of January, beginning of February this coming year for session.
But you could have an alternate.
Yes.
So the burden's not solely on one individual.
Correct.
I would do it if I have an alternate, if Ms. Miller's gonna be able to go and do when I can.
Yes, ma'am, if you would like, that'll be fine.
If you don't want to do it, I'd be more than happy to help with that.
No, I think that's good.
Good pick.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with that? All right, so we will update that motion as well for this evening to have Ms. Fields be the designee for the advocacy committee and then Ms. Miller to be the alternate.
Chair, can you just make sure that that's, that they're notified? Because it took me forever, really, to get on that list. So they need to be quick with their update.
Yes, we, I know last year I sent it in like the morning after, so I will follow up, though, to make sure that the list gets updated. Yes. Any other questions about FSBA nominations? All right, I believe Ms. Winchester handed everyone a physical copy of the agenda because it appears we still cannot get online. Yes, we'll finish, go through this quickly and then clear the room for discipline. Any questions on sections A through C? Seeing none. Any questions on D through F? Seeing none. Then we'll go down to consent agenda. Any questions on sections I through L?
Yes.
Which one, Ms. Sharpless?
Because I'm first in line, of course. Okay, I, I four. Not the road. The, I was just wondering, there's a timeline? Because I know this is about the Winter Haven High School, Denison Stadium, and also Tennerock High School turf fields. If there was a timeline on when we're expected to be completing these, that's all.
As I recall, I shared that at the last meeting. I apologize that we would complete the stadium renovation first and then the tracks would be done in November. The companies would come back and do both tracks. The football stadium would not be completed in time for the opening of the season. However, Mr. Talbott, who oversees all of our athletics, would work directly with the school. I believe they would anticipate, one of their first games is already an away game and then they would have to relocate a second game. But that it should be completed in time for them to return after that.
And then my other question's on I five. I was just wondering, how do we attempt to collect the unpaid student accounts? And is there a process in place to help us not get into this situation where we have these unpaid accounts going forward?
So you saw some of that take place earlier this evening, or earlier this afternoon. We talked about modifying our payment process and the dropout process. We do refer these to collection agencies as well. Some of these are offset through additional dollars we receive through the federal government. And so it depends on the student and their specificity of their circumstances as to whether or not we can be reimbursed. But for many of these, it results in a collection agency report. And then when we work with our credit agency, I believe, I don't see staff in the room, but I'd have to check with Ms. Chen because I think it's about 30% that we forfeit to the collection agency for their due diligence.
70% is better than zero.
I don't disagree. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Any other questions I through H? Sorry, I through K? I believe is what I, I through L.
Are we gonna have the board doc working for the board meeting, Superintendent Hyde? Or do we know that?
I don't know that. They're on the phone with them right now. I'm able to refresh every, and it'll cycle up. And then when I try to click on attachments, I tend to get the error message. So we're hopeful that we will get them up and running by 5:00 PM.
I hope so, too, because there's a lot of important stuff on the agenda tonight.
Any other questions on H through L? Any questions on N through P?
I only have one question on N.
Yes.
For the whole thing of it, for one through six. Can we have comparisons to know how competitive these prices are? For these different, I mean, for similar services? I just, well, I would like before the approval, I'd just like to have some sort of comparison to know if this is, this industry standard, these prices? Are we pricing out multiple things here? I mean...
Well, they all provide similar overlap in services. And part of that is because none of them can adequately staff one particular area by themselves. That's why it's inclusive of, it typically will include our RNs, our OT, our PT, school psychologists, not counselors, but behavior therapy. So we do price these out and negotiate these each year. As to, I mean, I could see if we could do an analysis to see if we're paying close to the industry standard as far as national average. I could see if that's the case.
The only reason, I just, when we pass these, I want to know that we're doing things fiscally responsible?
Oh, no, they're competitive.
Can I add that we can't, we would hire these positions ourselves if we could.
Correct.
So we are, we are only in the position of trying to find services because we can't, and we worked on that in Tallahassee for a while. There's some limitations. An OT has to have a doctorate degree. We're not competitively able to hire. And so that's made it difficult for us and having to pay contracts. But yes, I understand what you're saying. So maybe we could look at similar-sized counties to see if they have similar expenses.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things that actually came out. If you recall in the efficiency audit, when they talked about contracted services, that we were doing a far better job than the other larger districts because we're not overextended. The unfortunate reality here, and actually, this has become a topic of negotiation, is what we would like to do, and this is how we've approached it. We've taken a, we're taking a snapshot of the last five years. And I'll use, let me just identify one particular group, speech therapists. And we've looked at what have we contracted and paid for in those six years, in the last five years for that position? That's above and beyond what we would normally pay in our salary range. And then the recommendation is going to, that I will bring back before the board, is that we actually create a new salary schedule. This is, we're already spending those dollars on contracted service, reinvest those dollars into the overall salary schedule for that position. And maybe that makes us more competitive for retention. Because the 30% that we pay to the contract companies does not go to the employees. It goes to the contract company. So we'd like to see if we can be more competitive. But part of that is acknowledging, we've already been paying this amount year after year after year. Maybe if we were enhanced, we were able to enhance the salary schedule for that particular position, we would get better applicants and be able to increase our retention. I don't know that yet. And I don't obviously want to propose a solution that we end up increasing salaries, but then we're still contracting for the same number of people. So it's a fine line we're walking there. But we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can be. But to Ms. Miller's point, these are mandated... But to Ms. Miller's point, these are mandated positions through IEPs, 504s, and things that we can't let go, because otherwise, we're on a hook during the summer for compensatory services, and we would have to pay a local agency to backfill those for students as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, Superintendent Hyde. I had a question on K for the naming rights for... My gosh. The Frostproof? And now I'm not... Yes, for Frostproof, K five? No, it is not K five.
It's not K five?
Action item, right?
I... It's action.
Oh, sorry. It's an action.
Board doc is back up.
It's an exception. Sorry.
It is.
Oh, thank goodness. So I'll ask first. Does anyone have any questions on Action Agenda, section R?
It was back up. No, it's out.
The chair does.
Yes. I have a question on R one with the Frostproof Middle High School naming. Did we get clarification that there was a SAC committee member serving on that, the advisory board, that... Because in our policy, it requires that a SAC member is on that committee?
I would be surprised if Mr. Wyndham brought something forward that did not, but let me look and verify. And if not, I'll get verification between meetings.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything outside of our policy. Any other questions on section R? And we will get R nine and ten updated as soon as we can get into board docs. Okay. And we can get section R nine and ten updated now.
It would have been in last month, right?
Any questions on section S? Superintendent Hyde, do you have a report?
I do.
Mr. Murphy, do you have a report this evening?
A very brief report.
Okay.
But very brief.
Do you have any...
It's just asking for a...
For permission to advertise?
Permission to advertise. That was something that was supposed to have been advertised for today, but it has to be done next month.
Thank you. And we'll need a motion on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And then auditor, Ms. Matthews, you have a report? And then we will do board members' reports and public comment. Any other questions on the agenda? Anything else that needs to come before us during work session? Mr. Sharpless?
So committee report... Things we're involved in, since I am FSBA alternate on the Board of Director, I just wanted to say that I served as a moderator for the session where Superintendent Hyde and Varsity Tutors did a presentation. And hearing the testimonials, videos about... From our teachers about the impact varsity tutors made, I just want to say, board, it was a wise investment. Our teachers really appreciated the varsity tutors program. And also, there was one thing that was mentioned in another session I was at. It's called a board champion. It's something that we may want to think about. That's where board members are assigned a cabinet member to kind of start talking to and almost becomes an expert in that area for when board's having discussions. So that way... It's called a board champion, and they do it in one of the districts up in the panhandle, something we might want to start thinking about. You know, where, let's say, you're a transportation guru now for the board. You meet with, maybe monthly, with the transportation cabinet member. You know, just a thought, something to bring back from FSBA. That's all I have.
Anyone else have any updates from committees? I know we're running a little short on time, because we need to do discipline, too. So if you want to save your reports for this evening...
I don't have a report, but what did we ever find out about the master board training? Did we ever get an answer on that, whether or not we had a credit?
We do not have a credit. Go ahead, Ms. Vega. I apologize.
It's okay. I just... Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give a couple of thoughts on the Board of Directors meeting. There were definitely several informational items that were brought up. There is a great resource. Pretty much every Friday, they do a webinar with various topics. There's an archive at Vimeo.com/FSBA. Some of the topics, like the future of Florida's accountability system with FL DOE Chancellor Jacob Aliva, FAFSA data sharing agreements, and then the state of student mental health. So a lot of topics, I think, are quite valuable to us. They did share also a court case that was brought forward just very recently. So one that you probably want to read was Penn versus Escambia County as it relates to the book challenge process. So Penn basically filed a lawsuit against Escambia County. Would be worth a while to read that. They also offered like several data points on superintendent searches around the state. It's crazy. I mean, sixty-one out of sixty-seven superintendents around the state have served less than three years. And I do know that we actually have the best superintendent in the whole state of Florida and beyond. So just a few thoughts there from the Board of Directors meeting.
Thank you. And he's promised us he's not going anywhere, so that's also helpful. Just a couple other quick notes before we dismiss for discipline. Superintendent Hyde and I have been working on looking to do our board retreat in January, so we will be getting dates together to propose for that. That's something that we can certainly look to bring master board training at that time. Would likely make the most sense. And again, we'll start sending out some dates here in the next couple of weeks to make sure it's on everyone's calendar well in advance. The other thing is that I know it's hard to believe, but it's almost time to do evaluations again, because July is coming quickly. So I will send out that... Or have a vet send out that information in the next couple of weeks. My goal is to have it opened July first, and then if I could get it back from everyone by July thirty-first, that way we can use the month of August to go through and meet with each of our staff members and present their evaluations to them. I believe that is all I have. If no one has anything else, we will adjourn this meeting, and we need to clear the room as quickly as possible so that we can go into discipline.